Mayor will be here in just a few minutes, but I will go ahead and get this meeting started. Call this meeting to order at 5:11 PM. And can we do roll call? Councilmember Mendez.
Here.
Member Lopez.
Here.
Councilmember Rue.
Present.
And Mayor Protem Martinez.
Here.
Thank you. The first item today will be the presentations of the General Operating Fund Budget Review. So that'll be led by you today. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, who will be here in a few minutes, City Council, City Manager, City Staff, and members of the audience. Tonight, I'm here to present the Fiscal Year 2025-26 Review of the General Operating There. We'll start with the Overview and Budget Process. Sorry, it's being a little slow. This evening's budget workshop provides an overview of the proposed Fiscal Year 2025-26 Annual Budget for the City of Montclair with focused discussion on the following topics: Overview and Budget Process; Producing a Balanced Budget; Revenue and Appropriations; Unassigned and Special Purpose Reserve Funds; Personnel Services; Building a Better Montclair; General Fund Special Purpose Funds; Bonds and Debt Services; and the Conclusion. Annual Budget Development Process includes the following significant steps: Finance Department staff develop and refine revenue projections; Finance Department staff, in conjunction with departments, forecast personnel requirements; Department heads and their staff are provided with prior year amounts and formats for budgeting annual budget requests; Departments prepare their budget requests for appropriations; City Manager and Finance Department meet with department heads and staff to evaluate, modify, and finalize department-level requests. The proposed annual budget document is submitted for City Council review and consideration. Producing a Balanced Budget. The annual and primary goal related to budget preparation is to produce an operating budget where revenues equal or exceed appropriations and programs and services are adequately funded to meet community and organizational needs and requirements. The Fiscal Year 2025-26 budget, as presented, has a net excess of general fund revenues over general fund operating appropriations in the amount of $540,554. This excess in general fund revenues is driven largely by, one, efforts to reduce appropriations vis-a-vis a projected decline in tax revenues, and, two, improvements to the city's property tax base. The surplus in general fund revenue over general fund appropriations is projected to bring the general fund unassigned reserve to 6.5 million at end of year, representing approximately 16.55 percent of the general fund operating appropriations, which is less than the City Council's unassigned reserve ratio goal of 25 percent. Now, we will begin our discussion of revenues. The estimated revenue of all funds, we saw a decrease of just over $3.1 million. The General Operating Fund, we saw a low increase of $219,812. Significant Revenue Components for the General Fund: $32 million, just over $32 million, in combined property sales and use and transaction and use taxes. This amount includes the following estimates: $14.8 million in Bradley Burn sales tax; $10.7 million in transaction and use tax revenue related to Measure L; $2.69 million in transaction and use tax revenue related to Measure F; and $3.79 million in property tax revenue. Of the above total, the following amounts are allocated as indicated: For debt service bonds: $2.5 million; $2.59 million for the 2014 lease revenue bond; $2.39 million for the 2021 lease revenue bond; and $4.43 million for the 2021 pension obligation bond. Other fiscal year 2025-26 general fund revenue adjustments are: A $46,410 increase in taxes other than property, sales, and transaction and use taxes. Overall, sales and transaction and use taxes are projected to show year-over-year declines; $100,000 decrease in licenses and permits, due primarily to an expected decrease in the issuance of building permits; $15,000 decrease in fines and forfeitures, due primarily to a decrease in court fines; $177,500 increase in charges for services, due primarily to an increase in rubbish collection fees; and then a $220,000 decrease in miscellaneous revenue, due primarily to a decrease in reimbursed expenditures. Significant Revenue Adjustments for All Other Funds: $46,822 increase in the Section 2032 Road Maintenance Rehabilitation Fund, due primarily to an increase in gas prices; a $1.4 million decrease in the Park Development Fund, due primarily to a current decline in proposed new housing development in the city; $31,868 decrease in the Public Safety Fund, due primarily to a statewide reduction in consumer spending; $433,883 decrease in the After-School Program Fund, due primarily to a reduction in the number of schools serviced; $200,000 increase in the Economic Development Agency Assets Fund, due primarily to an increase in redevelopment property tax trust fund property taxes; $100,000 increase in the Sewer Operating Fund, due primarily to an increase in sewer fees. In Collection of Revenue: Depressed growth in general fund tax projections for Fiscal Year 2025-26 is based on, but not limited to, the following areas of concern: The International Monetary Fund's successive warnings that the global economy could face significant challenges stemming from reciprocal tariffs imposed by the U.S. on more than 200 nations; impacts of reciprocal tariffs on product inventory, demand, and manufacturing; Federal Reserve Board maintaining federal funds rate range of 4.25% to 4.5%, signically no immediate shift in policy or lowering of interest rates; declining consumer confidence; global bond diversification threatening U.S. bond markets; California home sales showing clear signs of slowing in 2025 as consumers grow increasingly concerned about personal financial outlook; as well as growing financial burdens related to public employee pensions; state tax laws and their effect on county pools and e-commerce sales; downgrading of U.S. creditworthiness; fears of recession; impacts of declining trade on California; a slowdown and retreat in inland empire logistics. These concerns are discussed at length in Section 8, Issues and Factors Directly and Indirectly Affecting the Economic Health of Montclair and the Local Economy, attached as supplemental material to the City Manager's Fiscal Year 2025-26 budget message. Other Factors Affecting the Collection of Revenue: Sales tax laws and their effect on county pools and e-commerce sales. Traditional brick-and-mortar stores are seeing declining revenue, which translates to declining sales tax revenue. With rising e-commerce sales, an increasing share of tax revenue derived from transactions and use taxes is being directed to county pools for redistribution to municipalities based on per capita sales tax performance. Major e-commerce vendors are entering into tax-sharing agreements with approximately 40 California cities, with host cities receiving designation as point-of-sale for vendors' e-commerce transaction, actions that increase host city tax revenues and decrease tax revenues for California's other 443 cities. Cities designated point-of-sale by major e-commerce vendors are also seeing an increase in their allocation of tax revenue from county pools. The HDL Companies Analysis. HDL Companies, Montclair's consultant for property, sales, and transaction and use taxes, reports that local economic indicators over the past year, including those listed below, point to negative tax revenue earnings for Fiscal Year 2025-26. HDL Companies' in their economic analysis does not address the anticipated impact of reciprocal tariffs on the national, state, and local economies due to lack of qualified data. Store closures, coupled with shoppers spending less at local retailers, netted general consumer goods payments at a 6 percent decline. Demand for specialized equipment showed a 12 percent reduction. Gasoline sales tax revenues were down 14 percent, largely due to the decreased price of global crude oil and decreased pump price. New car sales showed zero growth and are likely to demonstrate negative growth in Fiscal Year 2025-26 due to tariffs on steel and aluminum, foreign vehicle imports, and expected elimination of the EV tax credit. Used car sales in Montclair rose 2 percent, and restaurants saw 5 percent growth, due primarily to recent eatery openings and menu price increases. HDL anticipates a 3 percent decline in sales and transaction and use tax earnings year-over-year and anticipates a minor gain by mid-2026. Declines in tax revenue earnings are reflected in the Fiscal Year 2025-26 budget estimates. Evidence of Declining Tax Revenue Earnings: In Fiscal Year 2023-24, Montclair's audited revenues for sales and transactions and use taxes came in at $28.4 million. In comparison, two years later, projected sales and transactions and use tax earnings for Fiscal Year 2025-26 are estimated at $28.2 million, representing a decrease of $126,982. So we'll stop there for any questions.
Well, great. I apologize for being late. I'm going to blame it on Councilmember Mendez, the rookie here. He told me 6:00 PM yesterday. I'll see you at 6:00 PM. So blame him. But nevertheless, are there any -- Mayor Protem Martinez, questions on their revenues?
Yeah. Do we have any -- anything in the works or any plans? Or have you heard of any other cities having plans regarding the point-of-sale issue?
Well, yes. Over the course of years, there have been a number of efforts to address the issue with the state legislature. The state legislature has introduced a number of bills. I think I do discuss that in the budget message to the City Council. The majority of those bills did not pass through the state legislature. One bill that did pass does not really have a consequential impact on the issue. What the state legislature needs to forcefully do is to modify the tax code and specify that when it comes to online sales, the point-of-sale is the point-of-delivery, not the city that serves as host to the facility that ships out those products. Unfortunately, the state legislature has been unwilling to do that. California is one of only five states in the entire nation that has a tax policy that treats online sales this way. There is a major lawsuit that was recently settled in the state of Texas. I believe it was the city of Cold Rock. And that city lost -- or rather, the city won their lawsuit against the state, where the state tried to make the change that I just spoke of. But the decision of the court was not defining. The court specifically stated that the city could see a reversal of the decision that the court made, subject to additional information provided by the State Controller of Texas. We're still awaiting that information to be provided by that State Controller and to see whether or not the court in Texas will reverse its decision, in which case, we would hope that that case would be precedential, and other cities, other states will look to that case. But right now, the standard is that for those five states, they're leaving this issue alone and only trying to work around it. Our state has looked at maybe eliminating, or has looked at in past restrictions on entering into these sales tax sharing agreements going forward, but allowing the existing agreements to stand. There has been a recommendation by the City Managers Group of the League of California Cities to make some modifications that would be agreeable to the cities that serve as hosts to these fulfillment centers. I personally do not think that the terms of the recommendations go far enough because it allows these cities to continue to maintain these fulfillment centers and their property tax sharing agreements and keep 50 percent of the revenue that they would be receiving, that they currently are receiving, as part of the declaration of CITUS, and that would still continue to impact the remaining 433 cities in the state of California. But we will continue to work with our legal, our legislative representatives to try and secure what we believe is the appropriate thing, and that is just simply to pass a legislation that says that the point-of-sale is the place where the product is delivered. On-site, online sales are increasingly taking over the retail marketplace. Brick-and-mortar is on the decline. This is not an aberration. It has been on a decline for years, and online sales have been on the increase for years. And I think it's just a matter of time, maybe within the next five years, that online sales take over brick-and-mortar. And if the current situation continues, 433 cities in the state of California are going to suffer tremendously from the state legislature's failure to address this issue.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I want to apologize first. I have severe allergies the last couple of days, and it's been very difficult. To follow up on what you said about the online sales, I think the model was set out many, many years ago. I remember as a child, my mother would order things through the Sears &amp; Roebuck, Montgomery Ward, Spiegel, JCPenney catalogs, and others. And they had an insert, and you would look for California, and then whatever the sales tax was, your ZIP code, and maybe if that ZIP code had an extra tax, you added all that up, remitted your payment, and the item was delivered to your home whenever it was delivered, or you picked it up inside the store. I think something like that. It's simple. It can be done. We live in a computer age where it's very easy. You just put in the ZIP code, 91763, or whatever it happens to be, and they automatically know what the sales tax is. And I think that would be a better way to do this, or subversion thereof, because this is not serving anybody well. On top of that, I wanted to comment about a lot with retail. Retail, as the City Manager, excuse me, pointed out, is really struggling in many cases right now. We know sales are down at Target. We know sales are down at many other stores. Even grocery stores. I just read Kroger, which is not part of the California mix, but it is Midwest and in the South. They are closing over 60 stores because they're getting competition from larger entities, or they have a Kroger that can better serve people in one location, and they'll drive there or go there. We know 7-Eleven is cutting stores. Walgreens cutting stores. The days of communities where there's a little grocery store on every corner you can walk to are pretty much going to go away. Delivery models, they've been out there for years. People would have their groceries delivered. I think that's going to be more of the way we do that. And although grocery stores don't create a lot of sales tax revenue, there are some small things with sales tax revenue they create. We also have seen the closure of several retail stores. One of them, right here at our mall, Forever 21, the chain is going out of business. This is happening increasingly because you could buy a lot of these things online from more generic retailers for less money. So we do have to get this fixed. It is a huge hit to our community, and I think we do need to look into this.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real quickly, before I forget, page 10. The $100,000 decrease in licenses and permits, due primarily to an expected decrease in the issuance of building permits. I thought we were pretty good, and we had a lot of them in the queue, or at least a handful of them in the queue, to stay current. Did some of them back out? Why is there a decrease? Page 10, second arrow, there's a $100,000 decrease.
Decrease in licenses and permits?
Yeah.
Oh, well, that was because of building permits, and so we don't have the same number of building projects going forward into the next year.
So we didn't lose any? No people backed out?
No, no, no. This is just a demonstration of the fact that we don't have the same level of developers coming in right now.
Thank you for that. Then the point above it, the $46,000, I'm sorry, $46,410 increase. Why is that so low this time? Give me an example of what other taxes are besides property, sales, transactional, and use taxes. Who's taking it?
I gotta pull off the budget.
Just an example, because I'm kind of wondering.
Yeah, I don't quite know off the top of my head, so.
Is it traditionally that low, and I'm just caught off guard by the number now? It just seems low to me. I thought we were, in years past, a little higher in that line item, if you will.
Well, okay, so this just shows an increase. It doesn't mean it's the total. It just shows that these other tax components represent an increase of $46,000 over the prior year.
But I thought we --
So there's included in that is property tax, property tax passed through from shred, transient occupancy tax, document transfer tax, franchise, business license, utility users.
Okay.
So that's everything combined.
Hotels and whatnot. Okay, I see that. That still seems a little low to me. Perhaps it's, like you said, just a sign of the economic times.
Well, we do not have a lot of hotels, so we do not rely on TOD like a lot of cities do. So it's always been a low number for us. The fact that this is up actually is a good indication for those particular entities. And I would say that in the case of hotels, it's probably a direct result of the fact that, of the key program where we put homeless individuals in hotels temporarily. So they're having probably better occupancy right now.
And then regarding ADUs, obviously, they need permits for building those. Is there just a slow, is there no real uptick in ADU submissions?
We're getting our typical average of about 25 to 30 a year, and so that's going about the same pace. But with your discussion earlier, is sometimes we have lulls and getting, going through project reviews and approvals, and eventually then that's when permits hit at a later point in time. But we're in a little lull right now, too.
Okay. And then regarding restaurants, you say there was a 5 percent increase in restaurants. Forgot the exact verbiage. Let me try to find it here.
Due to menu increases and the number of new eateries.
In growth. Now, are we just talking in the number of restaurants, or are we actually talking about percentage of sales or taxes?
Here, that shows an increase in growth in the money that we've received related to restaurant operations.
Restaurants, okay. All right. I believe that covers those points I wanted to address, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Before we go on to the next portion of the presentation, I'm going to stop for a second and open up for public comment. I know we have one individual in the audience who wishes to address the council. This is, on items not on the agenda. Obviously, we have five minutes. I'm going to ask Rosemary to please come up. Rosemary in the audience. And you have five minutes to address the City Council. Any items not on the agenda, we technically cannot address, per the Brown Act. And I think the mic's live. Yeah.
Put my glasses on, sorry. I know it's not the topic of today, but I just, good afternoon to everyone, to the mayor, the senators, and all the city council here. My name is Rosemary Angulo. I'm a citizen. I've been a resident of Montclair for more than 25 years. I just want to talk about the incident that happened yesterday here in Montclair. It was yesterday, ju, sorry, yesterday, Wednesday, June 25th, at 10:00 AM on 4762 Canoga Street, bounty hunters were in the community impersonating police officers and ICE agents. They were in white trucks with license plates of Arizona, and they didn't have license plates in the front of the vehicle. And they asked one of my neighbors, they asked one of my neighbors, which his name is Brian, if he had papers. My neighbor is a U.S. citizen, and he, they asked him for his ID. So he showed him his ID, and then they left. I just want to know, number one, that's racial profile. Number two, they're violating his rights, and it's a crime what they're doing to the community. Right now, people are living in fear and with anxiety. They don't want to come out of their houses because they're scared that ICE agents will take them. And not only that, however, these ICE agents, they don't even show their faces, but yet they carry guns, and it's okay for them to take people? I just want to know if you guys are going to take action and take this into consideration. And not only that, I made a police report, and they said they were going to send a police officer, which they never did. So I just want to know what's going to be the solution in regards to this situation, and what are you guys, what are you guys are going to do in regards to this? Sorry. I know these, I'm just here to speak up for, for the ones that are unable to voice their opinion. So I just want to know what's going to happen.
As I stated, it's not a Brown Act that violates. I can't really talk about the issue because it's not on the agenda. I'm going to ask that Captain Ventura, are you in the audience? Captain Ventura, you there? Would you mind coming up? If you mind my seated, and Captain Ventura, would you mind, please, explaining the role of the Police Department when it comes to ICE and enforcement actions and what a role is?
I do have pictures right here.
And then perhaps after the words, I'm going to ask Brian, afterwards, I'm going to ask Captain Ventura to speak to you afterwards about this incident, if you don't mind.
Sure.
I just will remind that this is, unfortunately, a federal action. It's not a local action. We have no power over it. I did post something yesterday myself on Facebook about, about the enforcement actions that are taking place regarding immigration. I'm advising that anybody who feels as though they could be apprehended, or they haven't apprehended, or they have, they have a court case, based on the discussion I had with our Congresswoman Torres, it's highly recommended that they talk to an immigration attorney who's experienced in this field. It's an action that's being done by the federal government, and it's under the Constitution. It's the federal government's responsibility to engage in immigration. So we don't have the powers to do anything. I can't send police officers out to arrest ICE agents. And that's, again, it's constitutional, but it is a concern that we all have. I know all five of us on this diet have. We are concerned about the fear of our residents. It's unfair for the residents, and I think I'll speak for all five of us. We need immigration reform in this country. That's what really needs to happen. Again, we don't have any policy directions when it comes to enforcement, nor does our Police Department have that. So I'm going to ask Captain Ventura, please come up and just kind of tell us what the role of the Police Department is, if you don't mind seeing it right now. So, thank you.
I just have one more question.
Go ahead.
So how, so how do you know if they're really ICE agents or not? They're impersonating ICE agents and police officers.
I'm going to ask, perhaps Captain Ventura can explain that as well, as best as he can, because I also can tell you, and he may sustain this, we have no, Police Department is not having any communication with the Homeland Security Department, or with ICE, or any other federal agency regarding their enforcement actions that are taking place here in Montclair and our surrounding communities. So, but Captain Ventura, if you don't mind, just plug in real fast.
Thank you.
You bet.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. So as far as the Police Department is concerned, we have policies in place that prohibit our participation, assisting, directing, anything with federal agents when it comes strictly to immigration. We, we will not participate. Again, our policies prohibit that. As far as the incident on Canoga that she spoke of, I will look into that and see what type of call for service was received.
Thank you.
Many times, as you just mentioned, Mr. Mayor, more so than not, if ICE is in our city limits or in our sphere of influence, they are not notifying us of their presence. So as far as how to identify, I would encourage members of the public, if you believe anybody's impersonating any police officer, federal agent, Immigration, Border Patrol, and you feel that it is nefarious, then you need to put in a call for service for the Police Department, and we will. department. And we will respond to those, to those calls for service in regards to ICE and things like that. But outside of a criminal warrant, we, again, to be very clear, we have strict policies that prohibit assisting strictly with immigration.
Thank you. So just to refer that, that we are not engaging in ICE enforcement actions in the city of Montclair. That's also per California law. One, two, if there is people impersonating to be federal authorities, police, ICE agents, not really identify who they are, to contact nine-one-one to the police department, so the police officers can respond to determine what is occurring there. That's number two. And number three, what I also encourage people to do is have your phone. So something is occurring, put it on your, on your video camera. So if they're not ICE agents, at least the police officers have evidence it is, or you have federal authorities or local police officers who are committing civil rights, it's on this camera here, and then that can be dealt with through legal processes at a later date. And fourth of all, again, contact an immigration attorney who is experienced in this field. Thank you. And if you don't mind meeting with Rosemary, maybe if you want to, out in the hallway, I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Rosemary, for coming. Appreciate it. Okay, so now we'll go on to appropriations.
Mr. Mayor, now will we discuss appropriations for the fiscal year 2025-26 budget? On this slide, we show the operating appropriations, the department request versus the city manager recommended. So overall funds, the city manager reduced the budget by four-point-six million. And for the general fund, it was reduced by three-point-five-six million. And the city manager recommended amounts current year versus the prior year. In all funds, there was a three-point-one-eight million increase, and for the general fund, a one-point-eight million increase. For personnel services, all funds, thirty-four-point-four million, which is sixty-one-point-seven percent of total appropriations. This is up from thirty-two-point-seven million over for fiscal year 2024-25. For the general fund, twenty-seven-point-two million, which is sixty-eight-point-nine percent of general fund appropriations, and this is up from twenty-six-point-three million for fiscal year 2024-25. Personnel increases year to year are related to addition of grant-funded positions in the fire department, restoration of certain general fund positions in various departments following the COVID-19 pandemic, enhancing staffing in key functional areas, succession planning, implementation of negotiated wage and benefit increases, and CalPERS's increase to unfunded pension liabilities. For services and supplies, all funds, twenty million, twenty-point-six million, which is thirty-seven-point-one percent of total appropriations. This is up from eighteen-point-five million for fiscal year 2024-25. For the general fund, eleven-point-nine million, which is twenty-nine-point-two percent of general fund appropriations, which is up from eleven million for fiscal year 2024-25. For capital outlay, there is a total of six-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars in the fiscal year 2025-26 budget, of which two-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-six is being funded by the equipment replacement fund. For information technology, two-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand dollars for computer equipment for citywide requirements. Human Services Department, fifteen-thousand dollars for the map office furniture, which is, will be funded by the after-school fund program. The police department, a total of three-hundred-and-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-six for cell phone mapping and analysis services, two investigation vehicles and two patrol vehicles. The vehicles will be paid out of the equipment replacement fund. Fire department, forty-two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars for pumping, drafting, training prop, desks for command staff offices, a rolling workbench, and six LifePack CR2 defibrillators for use at city facilities. Public Works Department, a total of eighty-one-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirteen dollars for a Graco line driver ride-on attachment, a Graco laser guide two-thousand kit, a Honda GXR one-twenty rammer, a Heli Lift Truck forklift, a Miller Multimatic two-hundred-and-twenty AC/DC welder, four smart cover manhole lid systems, and an auto scrubber floor cleaner. So the budget allocations by department, it's an increase over last fiscal year, or the current fiscal year, of one-point-three million. For the fund transfers, the preliminary operating budget recommends the following transfers in to the general fund operating budget, a hundred thousand dollars from the traffic safety fund for applicable programs, and recommends the following transfers out from the general fund operating budget to the special purpose funds indicated below, a hundred-and-twenty-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars to the contingency reserve fund.
Okay.
Do you want me to?
Any questions on the appropriations? Councilmember Lopez.
Real quickly, regarding the Human Services Department, the fifteen thousand dollars for office furniture. Which budget was it? Was it last budget or the one before where we got office furniture? And I'm not quite sure what department it was. But we did pay for new office furniture for one of the departments. Just trying to figure out which one it was. No, no, it was either last or the one before.
Microphone on.
Actually, we did, we did new cubicles in finance.
Cubicles in finance.
And public works.
And, yeah, and I don't recall any other furniture for neither. Oh, the council admin offices, yeah.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure, try to figure out which departments got which, because I know we did expend for new furniture, trying to figure out where it was, where it went. All right. And so this is, you guys have been operating under used furniture for a while, then. Okay, just want to make sure. That was the only question, Mr. Mayor.
And it's not city funding that'll be paying for it. It's actually the grant funds.
Grant fund. I see that. The after-school program fund. Right. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Roux.
Yes, this is very basic, very generic. On page twenty, excuse me, page twenty-two, I have no problem with the expenditure. It says Honda GXR one-twenty rammer. What is that? I have, it sounds like some kind of a robot, a GXR one-twenty rammer.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Potem, council members, city staff, and members of the audience. So I'm sorry, I actually don't know exactly what it is myself, but Alex is not here to answer the question, but it's a piece of equipment that I believe is going to help us to compact asphalt, if I'm not, if I'm not, if I remember correctly.
Agreed.
Compact the base and compact asphalt when we're doing potholing.
Okay, that's fine. That kind of, I just did not know what it is.
Yeah, that's.
I think of a rammer, like a battering ram or something. It sounded like some robot.
No, no, it's an actual piece of equipment that our city yard staff will be using.
That's fine. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we'll go on to the next section.
So now we'll move on to the general fund operating, general fund operating fund balance unassigned reserve. So table six here shows the general operating fund balance unassigned reserve and comparisons with the operating appropriations. So you can see for the end of fiscal year 2025-26, we're estimating an operating fund balance of just over six-point-five million, which is sixteen-point-five-five percent of the total appropriations. Unassigned reserve balance. Government Finance Officers Association, general fund unassigned reserve ratio recommendation is minimum twenty-five percent, optimum fifty percent. City council direction is to maintain minimum unassigned reserve ratio of twenty-five percent of operating appropriations with the goal to achieve a fifty percent unassigned reserve ratio. Estimated June thirtieth, 2026, general operating funds fund balance estimate of approximately six-point-five million is less than the threshold target of twenty-five percent of operating appropriations. The estimated June thirtieth, 2026, general revenue fund reserve fund equity representing reserves for special purposes is estimated to be at thirty-one-point-nine million. Over the past seven fiscal years, the reserve ratio has fluctuated with a low of twenty percent and a high of twenty-four-point-nine-five percent. These fluctuations are generally the result of the following. A difference in operating appropriations between consecutive years, adjustments to the city's revenue profile, creation of the following debt service funds to achieve adequate funding for annual payments, the 2021 issue of lease revenue bonds, the 2021 issue of pension obligation bonds, and the UAL POB amortization fund. Adjusting special purpose reserve funds as necessary and when surplus funding is available, establishing additional special purpose reserve funds to reflect changing requirements related to city operations, funding assigned, funding assigned to the Economic Development Agency for real property acquisition, end-of-year audit adjustments for actual revenues and expenditures, mid-year budget adjustments. City staff will continue working toward a fund balance ratio in the general operating funds unassigned reserves that represent no less than twenty-five percent of the general operating funds appropriation budget with the long-term goal of achieving fifty percent unassigned reserve ratio. I will move on to maintaining general funds, fund balance, and reserves.
Okay, I'll start with Xavier Mendez then.
Just one comment on page twenty-six, talking about the unassigned reserve balance and the sixteen-point-five-five percent. That's basically our liquid reserve that we have available to us. But we also do have assets that were purchased by city funds that could be sold if needed, that would increase our unassigned reserve balance. True?
Well, for example, the Economic Development Agency, specifically the Housing Corporation, owns a number of properties. And if necessary, those could be liquidated by selling them, and that could add funds to the reserve for whatever specific purpose that the city council would designate. Those monies need to go to, for example, if there were an emergency and the city experienced severe revenue decline, that would be an opportunity, I would think, that the council would take to try and sell some properties to keep the budget operating at a healthy level. Of course, those are one-time sells, and once that money is dispersed, we don't have those assets to rely on any further. But yes, you are correct, essentially, that those properties would be sold, they would flow into the reserve until they are then allocated out based on direction from the city council.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're ready for the next section.
So now we will discuss maintaining general funds, fund balance, and reserve. General fund, operating fund, unassigned reserve fund balance. In recent years, the city's success at achieving and maintaining a healthy general fund, operating fund, unassigned reserve fund balance has been accomplished through a commitment to the following coordinated objectives. Fiscal restraint achieved by implementation of sound economic policies and practices, reviewing the shared allocation of personnel-related costs between the general operating fund, other city entities, and other city funds, maintaining an appropriate employee ratio, requiring employees to pay their respective share of the CalPERS member contribution, implementation of revenue enhancement measures. Maintaining a healthy general fund, operating fund, unassigned reserve fund balance continued. Recent and ongoing efforts designed to enhance city revenues include the following. November 2020 voter approval of Measure L, a one percent transactions and use tax measure. Ongoing evaluation of service contracting for specified programs, the objective to maintain and enhance services and achieve cost efficiencies as appropriate. November 2022 voter approval of Measure R, a seven percent commercial cannabis tax measure. Fiscal year 2025-26, planned implementation of a Proposition 64 Commercial Cannabis Compliance Program and related fee program and permitting structure. Continuing promoting development within North Montclair pursuant to the amended North Montclair Downtown Specific Plan with projects to include high-density residential and misuse development. Other recent and ongoing efforts are pursue development within the Montclair Place District Specific Plan area with development to incorporate housing and address the changing nature of the retail and entertainment industry, develop strategies for promoting housing, commercial, and industrial development projects throughout the Montclair community, develop strategies that promote affordable housing projects and address homelessness. In conjunction with San Bernardino County, conduct a specific plan study for Montclair's sphere of influence, address matters related to the impact of sales tax sharing agreements, coupled with restrictive designations for point-of-sale on Montclair's sales tax revenues. Also, continue planning for arrival of the A-line, formerly the Gold Line, light rail system at the Montclair Transit Center in 2031 to 2032, pursue development strategies that attract e-commerce vendors, pursue development strategies that capitalize on the new general plan update and its revised zoning patterns, design strategies, and associated planning guidelines, including the corridors plan and Arrow Highway Mixed Use District Specific Plan. Pursue acquisition of Caltrans-owned property at the Montclair Transit Center for housing and commercial development while maintaining and enhancing the transit function. Continue pursuing grants that promote infrastructure improvements to the community. Strategically plan for the acquisition of property to secure and promote future commercial and housing development.
Okay, Councilmember Mendez. Push your button there.
On page thirty-two, regarding November twenty-second, or 2022 voter approval of Measure R, a seven percent commercial cannabis tax measure, I know that we're working on that, and hopefully that will be soon. But the seven percent, wasn't there an option to go higher also, or was it limited to seven?
Well, we were originally looking at a ten percent, but during the hearings on developing the ordinance, the council made the determination that they wanted a seven percent cap.
Okay, that was it.
Okay. And if I may, I want to add a clarification to my previous statement, Councilmember Lopez, regarding the assets of the Housing Corporation, because I think it's important that the council and the community understand that in relation to those assets, there are two types of assets. There are the RDA assets that fall under the two percent set aside. Those assets were purchased with monies of the redevelopment agency that specifically require a fifty-year set aside with cottosels that maintain those properties for that fifty-year period as low-income housing. And those properties cannot be disposed of until the end of that fifty-year period. With the elimination of redevelopment agencies in 2012, all new properties purchased by the city since then do not fall under those same cottosels that are required under the twenty percent set aside. Yes, we do use them as low-income housing, but we are not obligated to maintain them. Yes, we have a fifty-year cottosel, but we are not obligated to maintain them in the same way that we are required to maintain the RDA-purchased homes that were acquired under the twenty percent set aside formula.
Yeah, so with that, how many properties did we purchase that aren't in the RDA?
So the bulk of them are under the RDA. I believe we have about a hundred and six right now, and I believe ninety-eight of them were purchased under the RDA restrictions. But the ones that we have in addition are not just homes, but they are also vacant land as well. So they actually have larger value in comparison to some of the residential units that were purchased under the RDA formula.
All right, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Lopez.
Yes, before I go into the two questions, on the topic, the hundred and eight homes that are, or ninety-eight, you said? Ninety-six, ninety-eight, under RDA?
Yes.
How far along are we with respect to that? Or no, we're no longer bound by that fifty-year?
No, we're still bound by the cottosels related to, because we use twenty percent set aside monies to purchase them, yes.
Okay, all right.
They were purchased at various times, so the fifty-year expiration will come at different times.
Okay. All right, great. Thanks for that clarification. Page thirty-two, we're going to go back to the Measure R line again. November 2022 voter approval of Measure R, a seven percent commercial cannabis tax measure. Just for Councilmember Mendez's benefit, when that item came to council- Just for Councilmember Mendez's benefit, when that item came to council, it needed an emergency vote, because we needed to meet the deadline by the registrar of voters to put it on the ballot in time and publish and get everything printed for voters to have the materials. Needed a four, four members of the council needed to agree. I was the one that kind of held out and wasn't willing to vote for the measure. I didn't like the eleven percent tax. I thought we got to bring it down. I talked to those in the industry, said it was too high with eleven percent, so we compromised. I believe, I initially wanted five, the mayor suggested would I settle for seven, I agreed, and that's how we came to that thing. But, to that percentage, Mr. City Manager, your projection of us getting approximately $2 million annually from Measure R, is that under the assumption that the seven percent tax would be in place, the maximum?
Yes, that is correct. So, we had HDL, our consultant that is working with us on the development of the ordinance as well as the operation agreement, to do a market survey, and their market survey indicated that at the seven percent rate, we would generate approximately $2 million.
Because I do remember in the language of the ordinance that was before voters, it was a tax up to seven, not necessarily right at seven. So, I just want to make clear that we, as a council, still have the flexibility of going a little lower. However, if we did do that, based upon the confirmation now, that $2 million projection would be altered because of the lower percentage if we chose to go that route.
Right, so, and this would be a major part of our discussion when we bring this item before the city council within the next several months. But one of the points of discussion with the city council was that they wanted some funds committed to community benefits. Since then, our conversations, and I believe that I indicated at the time of that discussion that a two percent requirement imposed upon businesses would be considered an illegal tax because it was not approved by the voters, and that was not part of the language in relation to seven percent. And we were talking originally about a five percent tax, as you just indicated, on cannabis businesses. And so, the likely direction that we are going to be coming before the city council with is that it will be at the full seven percent, and that two percent of that, as determined by the council, could be designated for community benefit projects, because we continue to maintain, and the consultants agree that mandating that businesses contribute two percent of their gross revenue would in fact be an illegal tax and would not be permissible.
I, let's have that discussion when the item comes forward, because I know Pomona does it religiously.
I agree, they do it, but I believe that they are susceptible to challenge for it, and they would owe money back.
And I just want to remind my colleagues, too, as the council, we can establish a policy. We already have a, we already have a community fund of, I don't know, thirty-five thousand, forty thousand. We do it once a year through this Community Activities Commission. It's in the budget, it's under the mayor and city council. So, as a policy, we can also allocate additional general fund money for this clause as well. We have the option as well, as the council would do.
My next point on, or question rather, on page thirty-three, the line that states in conjunction with San Bernardino County, conduct a specific plan study for Montclair's sphere of influence, is that to address potential annexation of county property down there?
That would be a component of it, yes.
Okay, because I do understand that the, or at least our supervisor is comfortable with cities absorbing sphere of influence properties down in between us and Chino and maybe a little bit of Ontario, so I just wanted to make sure that was something that would be discussed. Thank you.
Oh, okay, Councilmember Ru.
Yes, on page thirty-three. Develop strategies that promote affordable housing projects and address homelessness. It says developed, do we not have those in place already?
Yes, we do, but they're constantly evolving, and the latest strategies being developed are, one, the city is in conversation with the seven West End cities, as well as two additional cities in the eastern part of San Bernardino County, as well as the county for the development of a navigation center. The navigation center would have two hundred beds, and individuals in the respective communities that join the navigation center would be allowed to refer individuals to the navigation center for a certain period of time for treatment as well as for temporary housing, and then there would be the desire to refer them back to the local government. At the local government level, as discussed in one of the supplemental materials that was attached to the buzzet message, staff talks about a program that we are looking at that is similar to, but not exactly, the small, tiny homes that we visited in Baldwin Park. This is a company called Boxable, and they sell individual units, and ranging in size from effectively studio apartments up to three or four bedrooms, and you design them how you want them to be. The range is typically twenty thousand to fifty thousand dollars in price. You can assemble them on property that you own or otherwise acquire, and build these out to be either individual units, stack them to be apartments. We believe that this is a better approach because the units have a much life, longer life term. They come fully equipped with all of the appliances, including refrigerators, all of the toilets and everything else necessary. They're complete with kitchens. You don't have to have independent shower or bathroom facilities. We believe this is a much better approach. We're looking at this as a possibility, not only for addressing homelessness, but also for potential affordable housing, because we could house individuals in these units for longer periods of time at a much more affordable cost. The units are fully wired, fully insulated, and they set up on the site in a matter of hours. They sort of fold out like in an accordion nature, and we are planning a visit to their warehouse to give a full evaluation of the potential use of these products. And working with the county of San Bernardino, we expect to receive a $5 million grant from the county. We believe that this would allow us to acquire as many as thirty of these units, and if we place them on land that we currently own, this is probably a very feasible approach. If it's land that we need to acquire, then we will have to adjust, coming forward to the city council making recommendations related there, too, as to how many units we would buy, what types of units we would buy. But again, we do need to visit the warehouse to evaluate these units further, but they have a very high rating, as far as we can see, based on those cities that have used them, and we think this is an appropriate direction to go, particularly in relation to addressing affordable housing.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, let's go on to Personnel Services.
Okay. So, for Personnel Services, we have a total of two hundred and four full-time positions. Two hundred and three point seven one are assigned to general funds, sewer fund, and grants. Point two-nine are assigned to the Montclair Succession Redevelopment Agency. We do have one part-time benefited position, and this employee has elected to remain in the part-time benefited position to main social security coverage. Part-time benefited program will end upon employment separation. The city's fiscal year 2025-26 proposed operating budget anticipates several adjustments to personnel classifications for some or all of the following reasons. Ensure the effective and efficient operation of city departments, provide for succession planning, ensure adequate staffing, promote personnel retention, achieve depth of experience, and ensure the provision of city services, address evolving needs and changes to organizational operations, respond to underperformance of sales and transactions and use tax earnings, respond to the availability or loss of grants, be responsive to potential shifts in the local economy due to the state of uncertainty regarding federal economic policies. Personnel modifications are submitted to the city personnel committee for consideration prior to implementation of classification modifications and/or the appointment of qualified and appropriate personnel. Personnel Services reorganization. The fiscal year 2025 budget includes the following major personnel adjustments. Information Technology Manager. Reestablishes Information Technology Manager. In-house recruitment achieves succession planning and enhances program supervision. Approximately $15,000 additional costs for wages and benefits for fiscal year 25-26. Human Resources Manager. Reestablishes the Human Resources Manager position. Outside recruitment for succession planning and to oversee and manage personnel, risk management, labor negotiations, and other human resources duties and functions. Approximately $157,000 in additional costs for wages and benefits. Police Officer. Increases staffing backup to authorized strength of forty-one police officers. Approximately $129,000 in additional costs for wages and benefits. Firefighter Paramedic. Authorizes application for a second three-year SAFER grant to add two additional firefighter paramedics to enhance medic squad staffing. Grant estimate $443,812. City's contribution over three years projected to be approximately $284,000. City Planner. Reclassify Senior Planner to City Planner to assist Community Development Director with planning and technical program functions and establish continuity for succession planning. Approximately $13,000 in additional costs for wages and benefits. Senior Engineer. Reclassify Associate Engineer to Senior Engineer. Achieves succession planning and enhances program supervision and professional and technical expertise for project oversight. Approximately $15,000 in additional costs for wages and benefits. Associate Engineer. Outside recruitment to maintain current depth of professional experience within the engineering program and responds to the city's ability to continue with project management in a high volume of infrastructure projects. Approximately $120,814 in additional costs for wages and benefits. Facilities Maintenance Manager. Establish facilities maintenance manager class to assist with a higher technical level of skill for in-house maintenance of city-owned facilities. In-house recruitment to fill position. Approximately $12,000 in additional costs in wages and benefits. Irrigation Specialist. Reestablish irrigation specialist. Conduct an in-house recruitment to fill position. Maintains in-house specialist for irrigation maintenance with approximately $8,000 in additional costs in wages and benefits. Lead Worker and Maintenance Worker. Retains lead worker and two maintenance worker positions formerly assigned to the Parks Program. Lead Worker provides Public Works Operations Assistant Manager with an assistant and adds staffing to sewer and streets programs. Retains existing budgeted allocations. Public Works Inspector. Reestablishes the Public Works Inspector position. Conduct outside recruitment. Provides department with additional inspection capacity for a deep list of infrastructure projects and achieves succession planning. Approximately $86,000 in additional costs for wages and benefits. The Economic Development Coordinator. Reclassify vacant administrative analyst to economic development coordinator. Conduct outside recruitment for this position. Functions to advance business retention and attract new businesses to the city. Approximately $11,000 in additional costs for wages and benefits. Reorganization also calls for temporary freezes for three full-time and five part-time vacant positions and eliminates two vacant positions, project manager and environmental program supervisor, to create a new associate engineer position. Filling frozen positions will be based on improvements to the economy and evolving expectations related to personnel changes in the organization, including retirement-related separations. The fiscal year 2025-26 reorganization of personnel is projected to produce a positive impact on the general fund budget totaling approximately $165,000.
Microphone? Oh, yeah, it's on. I'm just not talking into it. Not yet. There's a lot, I'm sorry. So, under the Senior Engineer, reclassify Associate Engineer to Senior Engineer, achieves succession planning. So, I'm assuming we're taking the current Associate Engineer and changing him to a Senior, which is the person that we have, but then, a little further down on the next page, we're going to rehire another Associate Engineer. So, we're adding an additional engineer, and then, further, it just mentions in the personnel, under reorganization, freezing other positions, the project manager, environmental program supervisor, and creating a new Associate Engineer, that I'm assuming is that engineer that we're talking about in the previous?
Correct.
So, they're going to be doing project management and environmental management also. Okay? And then, under Public Works also, Inspector. Reestablishing a Public Works Inspector, which I know we have one, and based on, earlier in the report, it talked about that we are having $100,000 less in permit fees and construction fees, and so, just wondering if we really do need an additional Public Works Inspector since we're having such a decrease in permit fees and licenses?
Well, that reflects a decrease in private activity developers, but we don't know that that won't change. We're still waiting for CIM Group to let us know what they're going to do in relation to the Nordstrom Building, the Sears Building, as well as the six-hundred-and-six-unit condominium project that they submitted, as well as any other changes to that site. But a lot of that is actually related to all of the infrastructure projects that the city is pursuing. We have a significant number of infrastructure projects still on the table. We're pursuing grants. We have $40 million in grants we're still waiting to hear about, and as other grants become available, we continue to apply for them. There are already other infrastructure projects that are still on the table. Saratoga Park is in the future. Benson Street is in the future. Mills Avenue is in the future. Montavista Avenue is in the future. Central Avenue and North Viton Freeway is in the future. So, those are all projects that we're already committed to and have funding in place for a number of them already, as well as pursuing additional grants. So, really, the bulk of this is having an additional person to help the existing senior public inspector, works inspector, to do his job. We have him working excessive number of hours of additional time, no overtime, because he's a manager, and so, this individual will help to relieve the burden that's been placed on him, particularly as we start engaging in all of these other projects. And we would be more than happy to have a lot more private sector projects coming on board, and we anticipate pursuing those and engendering that level of interest in the community. So, I think the position is absolutely necessary, particularly as we look at the fact that the senior public works inspector may be looking at retirement within the next several years.
Okay, so, just kind of more part of the succession planning, and it seems like there's a lot of succession planning in this budget that I normally haven't ever seen, so, it's kind of nice to see that, but does that mean also that the people that are getting these increases, they're the ones that will probably get the position, so it won't be an open recruitment for new people?
It just depends on the position. Many of them will be in-house recruitments, because we have, we believe we have the people in-house to move up. Some of them, we don't have people in-house, or there's been a lack of demonstration. So, for example, the Public Works Inspector position, there was an effort to reach out to individuals in the existing city yard program to see if there was a level of interest, and there didn't seem to be. So, we will do an outside recruitment. They can still apply if somebody in-house wants to apply, but yes, some instances, it will be outside recruitments, and others, we believe we have people in-house who would be easily identifiable for promotion up, but anybody can apply as well.
Yeah, and I support, you know, bringing people up through the ranks, you know, at the city, and that's, so, yeah, that's a good thing, so, thank you.
Uh, Councilmember, Mayor Pomona Martinez.
Thank you. So, we're taking a little bit of a hit in our unassigned reserve balance, and it appears that the majority of it is coming from PERS. But I also noticed that there's quite substantial decreases in budget allocations in three different departments, which is Human Services, Police, and Fire. So, my question is, with the proposed changes to the personnel... So my question is, with the proposed changes to the personnel expenditures, moving forward, will that have a substantial effect on PERS? Are we going to see the following year, another hard hit? I'm sure that's being considered, but I am just curious.
So, PERS is an anomaly. You have two different groups within PERS. There's the classic employees, the individuals hired before January 2013, and then the individuals hired after January 2013, or on or after January 2013. And these individuals would all fall under that Pepper category, the Pepper Individuals. Those are the pension formulas that are less impactful on the organization. We anticipate that sometime by 2035, the experiences that we are realizing related to increases to the UAL, as well as increases to our normal cost component, will start decreasing because by that time, the PERS population, both for the active employees and the retired annuitants, will be decreasing significantly as it relates, again, to the classic members, and we should start seeing significant drops in our PERS-related costs by 2035. I would like to say earlier, but I just think it's too early to predict what that number would be. I know that PERS has hoped that 2030, we would start seeing the decreases. I don't accept that. I think it will be 2035, as late as 2040, but I really think 2035 is the optimum point. These employees would come into the agency as Pepper employees. The only way that that would change is if they left an organization as a classic member and then came to us within six months, then they would potentially be considered a classic member, but we don't know that until we do a recruitment, and in which case, yes, that could potentially add a burden to our PERS-related costs, but I think that for the most part, these individuals would likely be Pepper, and they would not be contributing significantly to any of our PERS-related costs going forward.
Thank you, and on that note, I'm very impressed that we're able to propose these sorts of personnel classification adjustments, and despite that, have such a significant, I mean, it looks like it's almost one and a half million, or 1.23 million dollars, negative change from the prior year. So that took quite a bit of work, I'm sure, to make that happen.
And we'll continue to look at that. You know, this is, there probably will be more reorganization as individuals make decisions related to retirement, and that will impact how we look at that. So there's more to come. This is just what we're aware of at this point in time. And the savings actually would have been better if Ryan hadn't contacted me yesterday and told me that the grant for the firefighter employees actually required a city contribution now, so that reduced our savings. But nonetheless, I think that that's an important avenue to pursue, anyway.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Lopez.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Few questions. This might be the biggest portion of the meeting that I make comments on. Page 39. Respect to firefighter paramedics. We're giving authorization for the application for a second three-year SAFER grant, but we currently have, we currently are in the middle of an existing grant, right, for medic personnel?
Yes, that is correct.
And it expires when?
It's a three-year grant, it's brand-new, so we're just at the beginning of that grant.
So this would only bolster and add to staffing should we get it?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
It's a three-year grant, so 28 probably sounds right.
And then the City Planner Department. We still contract with a company to review plans, correct?
Yes, we do.
Is that, how long is that contract for?
Well, we also have in-house, we have a plan checker in-house, but we only use outside consultant if we need their expertise.
They're on call, so it's not?
Yeah, that's not a, yes, it's not a regular thing, they're not, it's not a retain, it's a retainer, and it's paid as used.
Okay, so by reclassifying this position, would it help alleviate some of the work in your department?
I'm sorry, by reclassifying which position?
Well, the reclassifying Senior Planner to City Planner.
No, that won't affect that.
Okay, all right. Did you still want to make comment, or no?
It'll help with the planning efforts on our part to allow someone to take on more complicated projects.
Okay. And on page, I'm going to go to 42, then jump back to 41. On 42, the last bullet, it says it'll have a positive impact on the general fund in the amount of $165,000. Is that what we're being asked to expand?
No, that's a savings, that's a savings.
Perfect, okay. Now, concerning Public Works, on page 41, the line that reads, "Lead Worker Provides Public Works Operations Assistant Manager With An Assistant And Adds Staffing To Sewer And Streets Programs." Here's what I'd like to know. I looked at the budget, the actual staffing chart in the binder that we were given. I only see three staff members that specifically deal with sewer. So I'd like to know, in the prior budget, just how many folks did we have in the budget to assist with sewers? Is it eight to 10?
No, it was three, but there was a Lead Worker for Parks that was assisting. So that Lead Worker is being moved to that assistant-level position under the Assistant Public Works Operations Assistant Manager, and then we will be replacing him with a new Maintenance Worker. So there will be four. There will be the Lead Worker, and there will be three Maintenance Workers under him.
And those will be dedicated to sewer?
Yes.
Okay, and that is actually bolstering our numbers from what we presently have, correct?
Yes. Well, because that Lead Worker is helping right now, they in effect have that, but I think they're down a position, so with recruitments, and this additional position, it'll give them four.
Okay, and that is barring them getting another offer somewhere else and leaving us, right?
Yes, yes, that would always be the case.
Happens with staff. Now, since we're on the issue of sewer, the new rates that we approved were, IUA is approximately collecting 22 of it, we're getting nine, 10?
The new rates that we approved were for IUA. The only thing that the city gets out of sewer rates are, do you want to break them down?
Nine or $10, if I'm not mistaken?
We get a sewer maintenance fee, which is very small. I think it's a $0.50 or dollar charge.
Yeah, I believe it's about $7 or $8 of an increase total, or the city's portion. The rest is all IUA.
And I know that we're the pass-through agency. Our residents pay it to us, we then hand it over to IUA. Do they call it a CCR or something? What's the acronym of the?
For the transfer, for the?
Their portion of the money that we pay them.
It's just a sewer monthly fee.
And, but, how, basically, the portion that we collect for them, how often do we hand it over? How long do we hold it?
It's based on a call. They make the determination when they need the money, and then they contact all the cities and say, "We're doing a call, and you send us this amount of money."
Yeah, that's typically for capital projects, but we do pay or send the portion that we collect to IUA on a quarterly basis. If that's, yeah, all the monthly fees that we collect, then we send all that back to them.
And it's just basically a placeholder and account that we don't touch, we don't spend for ourselves?
Correct.
No, we're not allowed to know. We collect interest on it, and we are allowed to keep the interest.
I get it, okay. I believe you touched on everything, I appreciate it, thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, just want to understand something. With Colt Landscaping, there's a savings of $185,000 with Colt Landscaping? We maintain the park consulting, park contracting, Ed?
Yes, well, so I believe there was the cost of three Maintenance Worker positions, which had a value of about $186,000, and that generated a savings in that regard.
Okay.
But we've also increased the contract for Colt to pick up not only the medians that they were doing before, but all of the parks, as well as the city facilities. So even with those increases, there is an offset of that. The city generated a savings related to personnel expenditures.
Okay, let's go on to Building a Better Montclair.
Building a Better Montclair. Building a Better Montclair. Building a Better Montclair requires a team of dedicated leaders committed to excellence and the pursuit of ideas and ideals. To achieve this blend of municipal achievement, the city manager regularly challenges the organization with new objectives designed to promote improvements to the overall quality of life in Montclair, facilitate infrastructure improvements throughout the city, promote and achieve strategic objectives as established by the city council, promote commercial and residential development throughout the city, establish an effective grants program to secure state, federal, and county grants for a variety of physical and economic improvements for the community, promote extension of the light rail transit to and development of the Montclair Transit Center. Develop solutions to community issues including homelessness and affordable housing. Address long-term issues requiring dedicated funding for specific purposes, for example, pension liabilities, bond obligations, infrastructure improvements, and capital requirements. Promote and enhance community service and public safety programs. Reduce revenue for employee working condition enhancements. Address state and federal legislative priorities that affect organizational operations. Strengthen and harden Montclair against adverse fiscal conditions. And address city council-directed priorities and objectives. Pursuing Grants for Infrastructure Improvements. Central to the effort to build a better Montclair is the capacity to identify funds necessary to achieve a robust program of improvements. The city remains aggressive in pursuing grants at the federal, state, and county level, combining grant funding with 2021 lease revenue bond funds to promote and complete new projects. Grant availability was greatly enhanced following implementation of the $1 trillion Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act during the Biden administration, creating historic levels of funding opportunities to rebuild infrastructure. On a funding level, the IIJA was intended to achieve the following. The largest federal investment in public transit in U.S. history. The nation's single-largest dedicated bridge investment. The nation's largest investment in clean drinking water and wastewater infrastructure. Bringing access to reliable high-speed internet to every part of the nation. Tackling the climate crisis by making the largest investment in clean energy transmission. Creating a grid deployment authority to build a clean electric grid. The majority of available grants require either matching public funding, private investment, such as those incentivized by tax credits, or both. To meet local match requirements, Montclair has typically utilized 2021 issue of lease revenue bond funds. Within days after taking office and despite court orders to release grant funding, the Trump administration foes IIJA grants and other formula grant programs, denying, at least in the near term, access to more than $425 billion in remaining federal grant funding. Up until suspension of major components of IIJA funding, Montclair had been largely successful in many of its grant applications. Starting in 2020, Montclair has aggressively applied for approximately $242.729 million in state and federal grants, has been awarded approximately $40.6 million in grant funding to date, and has approximately $40.6 million in grant awards pending. The balance of $161.4 million has, to date, been either denied or suspended. City staff success with obtaining grant awards has no parallel in Montclair's 69-year history and is unlikely to be surpassed over the next generation. City staff continue applying for grants based on commitments from federal administrators that some grants will be forthcoming. Gold Line and North Montclair Development. Gold Line Light Rail System. In addition to grants supplied directly by Montclair city staff to achieve improvements for the Montclair community, grants received by other agencies are also anticipated to produce beneficial benefits for Montclair. The Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authority awarded $798 million in state funds to the Fithill Gold Line Extension Construction Authority for completion of the Gold Line Light Rail from Pomona to Montclair. San Bernardino County Transportation Authority will provide the balance of approximately $80 million to $96 million for extension from Claremont to the Montclair Transit Center. In February 2025, the Construction Authority received one build proposal that came in approximately $300 million above the engineer's estimated costs for construction, primarily related to long-term uncertainties in the economy and then recently imposed 60% tariff on steel and aluminum. In order to manage and bring down construction costs on the Pomona to Montclair segment, the Construction Authority is rebidding the project under a construction management-at-risk proposal. Using CMAR breaks design and build into separate contracts and pushes future risk onto the contractor. The Construction Authority anticipates CMAR will provide multiple contractor bids for the Pomona to Montclair segment, pushing costs closer toward allocated funding. If the CMAR bidding process is successful, construction on the Pomona to Montclair segment is expected to begin in summer 2026, with construction completed in 2031 to 2032. Montclair has allocated $1.75 million to a Gold Line Betterment Special Purpose Reserve Fund toward construction of a pedestrian bridge and other betterments at the Montclair Transit Center to complement Gold Line operations and future development at the Transit Center. Montclair has allocated $1.75 million to a Gold Line, oh, it looks like that's a duplicate, sorry. Oh no, this is for the pedestrian bridge and other betterments. City staff have applied for a $25 million Better Utilizing Investments to Leverage Development grant to acquire the Caltrans-owned parking fields at the Montclair Transit Center for future development of the site for housing and commercial development and to retain the current transit use. City staff are finalizing a site master development plan for the Transit Center property. Design elements of the plan focus on market rate and affordable housing, commercial development, 1,100 space parking structure, transfer facility with secured stand-station platforms, bus turnaround, transit passenger facilities and services, shuttle and e-tram services, central plaza, and street and grid block design. So here, on the next four slides, we have some renderings for the Transit Center Master Site Development Plan Street. North Montclair Development. Promoting development in North Montclair is designed to improve the overall quality of life in the community, create new housing, office, and mixed-use projects, move forward the city's vision for a transit-oriented district, and improve Montclair's property and sales tax base. Projects now under development in North Montclair include the following. Village at Montclair. The 360 mixed-use development is nearing end of construction, with most, if not all, units expected to be available for occupancy in the latter half of 2025. The Alexan Kendry Expansion. This high-density, 137-unit residential project is nearing end of construction, with most, if not all, units expected to be available for occupancy in the latter half of 2025. The Marlo. This project will consist of 302 residential units, which are expected to be available for occupancy in late 2026 to early 2027. Montclair Place. Montclair Place. CIM Group has submitted plans for an eight-story, six-hundred-and-six-unit mixed-use project featuring podium parking, a bridge connecting buildings, and six different architectural building types. The project is currently stalled as CIM Group awaits a more affordable lending market. We have had some other items happening at the mall. Main Event Entertainment. Main Event opened in April twenty-twenty-five as the chain's first California location. The Family Entertainment Center features bowling alleys, arcades, billiards, laser tag, and other family-oriented games and a restaurant. The Canyon Montclair. The Canyon Montclair venue closed in early twenty-twenty-five reportedly due to leasing issues. CIM Group continues to evaluate and consider a number of uses for the site, which remain undisclosed. The Former Sears Store. The former Sears Store building remains vacant and is expected to be demolished to make way for future housing and commercial space development, plus a Rombla, plus a Rombla, a tree-lined pedestrian street featuring open markets, park space, and other pedestrian-friendly features. The Former Nordstrom Store. The former Nordstrom Store building remains vacant as CIM Group determines the best use for the site. For the Arrow Highway and Fremont Avenue improvements, city staff is completing final construction and engineering design. Arrow Highway improvements will include tree-lined medians, landscaping, and utility and roadway, curb and sidewalk improvements on Arrow Highway between Central and Mills Avenues. Fremont Avenue will include a right-of-way acquisition, landscaping and roadway, curb and sidewalk improvements. Some Arrow Highway and Fremont Avenue intersection improvements have already been completed. Construction will be coordinated with site developers for Village at Montclair and Alexan Kendry. The NM DSP, Montclair Place District Street Design and Engineering. In June twenty-twenty-two, the city council approved to design and engineer roadway improvements in the NM DSP Montclair Place District, including for Arrow Highway, Fremont Avenue, Moreno Street, Central Avenue, Mona Vista Avenue, La Rombla, Ricton Street, and Huntington Boulevard. Where applicable, design and engineering improvements are coordinated with project developers, including CIM Group, Tramo Crow Residential, and Village Partners. Promoting a stronger economic foundation. Evaluate Service Contracting. The city manager will continue to evaluate outsourcing of services to promote cost efficiencies and enhance services for the community. Implement a Prop. 64 compliance program. At the direction of city council, Economic Development Agency, in coordination with special legal counsel and HDL companies, is now in the process of redrafting and condensing the medicinal and adult-use cannabis regulation and safety law of the city of Montclair for presentation to the city council in fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six. A model operating agreement between the city and vendors is also under development. Based on an HDL consultant market analysis, city staff projects that a regulatory system for commercial cannabis will minimally produce an estimated two million dollars annually. Redevelopment of Montclair Place. The ongoing redevelopment of Montclair Place is intended to address the changing nature of the retail industry, particularly as those changing dynamics affect major retail shopping centers throughout the nation. Promoting development of the Montclair Place District would improve the overall quality of life in the community and enhance the city's sales and property tax base. Economic Development Agency and its role in promoting economic development and promotion of affordable housing development. The purpose of the Economic Development Agency is to secure funding for real property acquisition, affordable housing development, homeless assistance, and other economic development activities similar to the activities of the former Montclair Redevelopment Agency. In the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six proposed operating budget, the Economic Development Agency assets retains the following: a fund balance of five-point-eight-eight million, three-point-three million in low moderate income housing funds, and thirteen-point-seven million in residual receipt funds. Promoting housing, commercial, and industrial development and healthy Montclair projects throughout the community. Promoting development throughout the Montclair community would improve the overall quality of life in the community and improve the city's sales and property tax base. Projects currently underway in Montclair include the following: citywide development. A number of housing, commercial, and logistics projects have already been completed in the city's southern sector with other projects either in development, awaiting construction date, or in review. Tiki Drive-In Mission Project. This project, now at the end of its construction phase, will accommodate a mix of light, industrial, manufacturing, and logistics support in a campus environment. Reader Ranch Park. Major construction on the Reader Ranch Park adjacent to the historic Reader Heritage Ranch has been completed. City staff will designate a date for the planned grand opening following completion of SCE work at the site. Saratoga Park. In twenty-twenty-two, the city received two million dollars in community project funding from the Office of Congresswoman Norma Torres for improvements to Saratoga Park, the city's little league sports field. City staff had applied for an urban greening program grant in the amount of four-point-three million, however, the grant had been rescinded. City staff has applied for an outdoor recreation legacy partnership grant for approximately eight-point-six million dollars. City staff also anticipate receiving a one-million-dollar grant from the Office of San Bernardino County's Fourth District Supervisor. If funding is fully developed for this project, construction is expected to begin in twenty-twenty-six. San Antonio Creek Trail and Sunset Park. When completed, the entire length of the San Antonio Creek Trail will provide new connections between neighborhoods, parks, recreation centers, schools, transit areas, job centers, and other community destinations. Construction on the Pilot Segment and other improvements to Sunset Park were completed in May twenty-twenty-five at a cost of approximately seven-point-eight million dollars, including four-point-three million dollars from the Clean California Local Grant Program. The park is now open to the public. Do you want me to stop there for questions?
Okay, no, I just have a question real fast on grants. This, this very large sheet was given to us.
Yeah, that would be...
Yes.
So, are we, I noticed that several grants have been denied. So are we seeing possible success on future grants like Central Avenue? And I think it's the third time we've applied for Central Avenue Bridge.
Well, as indicated, we have forty million dollars in outstanding, which would be inclusive of the ones you just mentioned, so we're just waiting to hear as well as completing applications on others. So, we're constantly aggressively pursuing grants, um, and we are constantly questioning our, our consultant as to what grants are available, so we're not wasting money, and it's just an active, ongoing process.
And then, uh, with, with state budget constraints and now federal budget, uh, changes as well, always, is applying for grants more challenging now?
It, it depends on the grant. So some of the, the majority of the grants from the state are through bonds, and so those monies are secured. The state budget aside, we don't expect a negative impact, uh, on those funds. I think, uh, the monies we need to be concerned with are dollars that we're asking for in relation to, for example, transit that wouldn't be bond-related at this time, however, uh, whether or not this happens, there is the expectation that there will be a twenty-billion-dollar bond, uh, for transit-related projects in November of twenty-twenty-six, of which approximately, uh, ten billion dollars is designated to transit, and we would hope that if that is true, uh, we will aggressively go after that to close the gap on the Gold Line funding.
Okay. Going back to Central Avenue Bridge, uh, I know SBCTA is looking at an extension of Measure I and looking for a project with Central Avenue, and is this one of the projects we are thinking about maybe asking the SBCTA to add to the list?
Central Avenue? Uh, no, that is something that we would be doing independently through, uh, the lease revenue bonds and hopefully with additional grants to fund that project.
So SBCTA cannot undertake that bridge project?
You know, we're, we are finding a lack of cooperation from SBCTA in relation to grant dollars that they control. They want to use them for their, for their own purposes, and they don't really want to share them.
Okay, I'll have a conversation with you about it afterwards then. All right, uh, Councilmember Mendez.
Yeah, um, just a couple things. On page fifty-six, um, the Gold Line in North Montclair, uh, under Montclair Place, um, I, I never really knew exactly what was of the location where the eight-story, six-hundred-and-six unit, um, project was going to be. I, I don't know where that was going to be, like, what building was it going to be here?
It would be in the northeast corner where the former jewelry store was, uh, Robbins Brothers, uh, the Sears Brother, uh, and that empty lot that is right there.
Okay, so it's taken all that, all right. And then, um, uh, I know that's a long, Jan, did you put all this together? Did you do?
Also, the city manager reviewed it and added a few things behind.
Well, great job, it's, it's a lot, a lot, so, so thank you, thank you for that, I, I appreciate that. And I know how hard economic development is working to find, you know, areas that people can do projects at, and, you know, just getting to see all this stuff. It's been very eye-opening for me, so, um, just wanted to say thank you for all that. That's it.
Okay. Councilmember Ru.
Yes. Things, one, in regard to Gold Line, I will make, you know, something I learned over the last two Gold Line dedications. On Friday last, I along with many others, uh, attended the Gold Line Dedication in the city of Pomona. The next day was the Gold Line, Saturday, the Gold Line Dedication in the city of Laverne. Very well done, it's moving to Montclair. One of the things I learned at the Pomona dedication is that the average transit rider using the light rail system has an income of less than sixteen thousand dollars a year. This is why I have been very strong about wanting to ensure that any parking, excuse me, for the mass transit, be it the MetroLink, be it the Gold Line, be it the bus, be it something else in the future, that whatever is used for parking for mass transit, that we do whatever we can and ensure that there is, will not, there will not be any charge for parking. When you're making sixteen thousand dollars a year, three, four, five dollars a day can be a lot of money and discourage you from using it. So I would hope as we move forward with a build program or something else, that we can work in something, if it's a private developer, we let them know there will be no, no parking, no charge for parking for the transit. It just, it's self-defeating. Looking at, we're talking about, uh, the highest and best use with the Transit Center, I certainly agree with that. Has there any thought been given to maybe working with our federal partners and perhaps having Amtrak come through here? They do have a stop in Ontario on Emporia Street, the train does stop there. Um, there isn't a lot of parking there, and it's kind of a remote, it's not completely remote, but it's a little remote. Um, nothing wrong with the stop, but I'm wondering if we might be able to do something to have Amtrak at our mass, at our Transit Center, because that consolidates everything up there. You will have a long-distance train, you have our short-distance train, MetroLink, Gold Line, you'll have our three, uh, regional bus lines, RTA, Omnitrans, Foothill Transit, and then the, I don't know if it'd be short, mid, or long haul, uh, Greyhound. I think it would make a lot of sense. At present, Amtrak has a stop in Clermont, but it's only a bus. Um, from wherever you are, they bus you into the Clermont stop, no, nothing wrong with that. Um, I just think it would make sense if we could follow through at some point and see if there'd be an interest in getting Amtrak up there. Um, and the last item, and it's something I've commented on before, it's wonderful to want to build housing up at Montclair Place, but I don't think we need to have housing for the affluent. I realize there's a desire among many, so that when people go to the Plaza, I'll still call it the Plaza, "Oh, look at these affluent people, this must be a great place." I'd prefer to see it be for working class, because the working-class families are the ones who, we work at the mall, work at those restaurants, and they can then just walk there. They don't have to worry about riding a bicycle from somewhere else or driving their car. Won't work for everybody, but if we can work on something like that, I'd feel much more comfortable with that. That is what they do in many other parts of the world. The working, the housing for the working class is right near the shopping areas, and the well-to-do live more out. If you're well-to-do, you can drive a car to the mall, but if you're a working-class person who's working at one of those stores or those restaurants, you may not even be able to own a car, and you can have a great bus system or rail system, but it's not going to serve you as well as just going downstairs and going to your job. So that's a comment I had on that thing.
Okay, Councilmember Lopez.
Uh, yes, on page fifty, um, regarding the, um, Caltrans-owned property at the Transit Center. Last, I believe I talked with you, Ed, it, we were still trying to plead our case, you submitted a very detailed convincing letter to Senator Rubio and to the state, uh, basically going to bat for our case as to why the property should be in our hands and we own it. What is the latest on, on that actual, um, negotiation or discussion? Because I think we wanted them to, to declare it surplus and then we could purchase it, correct?
Yeah, that is correct, and so the effort has basically been stalled because the property, um, when we last spoke with Caltrans, which would have been October twenty-twenty-three at this point regarding the property, uh, Caltrans actually reached out to the city, that was their intention to place it on the surplus property list, and they were giving us the first right, uh, purchase, and we have since found, as we work through the legislature to try and get a bill to provide the property to Montclair, that the property was never actually listed as surplus property by Caltrans. Um, and in order for the state to give the land to the city, uh, the property has to be declared surplus. Instead, it was on an excess property list, uh, which means that, um, it is retained with the state, and other agencies get to look at the property to make determination as to whether or not they have a use or a purpose for the property. So the property, maybe even remains on the excess property list at this point in time. So we applied for a raise grant, twenty-five million dollars. Uh, it was our first time. It's a significant amount of money. We were advised in advance that it was very likely that, uh, we would not secure the grant the first time. We did not, uh, so we've, we've applied for it again. It's now called the Build Grant as opposed to the Raise Grant, and I expect that we will be hearing on that sometime before November or on or about in November as to the status of that. Um, however, in the budget bill that is currently under consideration by the state legislature, uh, the legislature and governor have basically come to terms on the final components of the budget bill. It does need to be passed by July one. Agreed that even after July one, they continue to negotiate terms of the budget bill, but one of the issues that is up for discussion is housing, and more specifically, uh, the governor's push for housing on transit-direct properties. And I think this creates an advantage for us, and so I am working on a letter to the governor's office, uh, and I will be asking the mayor to sign it, and the governor, the letter to the governor will be specifically asking that in pursuit of the governor's objectives in relation to what he is currently negotiating with the legislature, that you have twenty-six acres, uh, in which, if you give it to us, we will agree to develop the property, uh, to provide the affordable and market-rate housing. Now, we have to bring in a public partnership, a public-private partnership, and in order to do this as a public-private partnership, there's going to have to be a mix of market-rate and affordable housing, and a reason for that is the value of the property is approximately thirty-five million to forty million dollars. The cost of building the parking structure is going to be fifty million dollars. There is a negative value on the land, so if we enter into a public-private partnership, no developer is going to develop a public parking structure for fifty million dollars, um, and then lose money on the affordable housing side. It's not going to happen. So there has to be a mix of market-rate and affordable housing, that's our pursuit in relation to acquiring this property from the governor. Now, I don't know what the governor's position may be, it may be similar to Councilmember Ru's position in that it is, needs to be entirely affordable housing, in which case, if that's it, I don't know how the parking structure is going to get built, and the only reason that you can develop housing on the, uh, remaining acres is to have a, the parking all consolidated in a parking structure. We don't have the money to build a fifty do, fifty-million-dollar parking We don't have the money to build a fifty million-dollar parking structure. So from my mind, the only way it's going to be built is that the developer will build the parking structure. And if we acquire the land, we give the land to the developer in exchange for the parking structure. And the parking structure will need to make money on the affordable housing, I mean, on the market-rate housing in order to allow them to also build the affordable housing. So I don't know how it's going to work beyond that. I do understand the desire to have transit-related affordable housing. I don't believe that that's achievable unless we do it in the way that I've just outlined. But we still need to acquire the property. And I think our best effort right now is to prepare this document, this letter to the governor, and fall on his desire to do what he wants to do, and it's all this housing development related to transit, and see where we go with that. At the same time, we understand the desire for affordable housing, and we will want to do that to the degree that we can. The city owns property further to the east, just to the west of the existing discount store, escapes, the name escapes me at the moment. Costco. And we could certainly build affordable housing there, which is proximate to the transit center in addition to affordable housing that would be constructed directly on the trans center property. So I think that would augment the affordable housing that we would be building in the area. But I do think that if we're going to attract a public-private partnership, the developer has to make money. And the only way that they're going to do that is with some market-rate component.
Wouldn't, wouldn't giving them the land be a gift to public funds, though?
That's only offsetting the cost of building the parking structure for fifty million dollars.
I understand. All right. I want to address the roundabout that's listed on this place setting of grant lists. At our last council meeting, and this ties into where I'm going, an item that we approved regarding Senate Bill One, we designated the Silicon Avenue and Third Street Rehabilitation Project as the, I believe, the ongoing project for us to be in compliance or at least get possible funding for the California Road Repair and Accountability Act of twenty seventeen. What I wanted to ask was, why wasn't the roundabout at Ramona and Howard not added to that list?
So we are using SB one funds to rehabilitate Third Street and Silicon. We are, like, as mentioned by City Manager Starr, we are pursuing federal funding for the roundabout. So that's, that's, again, that's what we're trying to do, just trying to obtain other grants for, for the roundabout. Because for Silicon and Third Street, there are no grants for those type of projects. That's why we're using SB one funding for that. And also to meet our MOE or our obligate, or our, okay, now I don't know what MOE is for. But it's our, it's our, like, match or what we need to spend annually to, in order to meet the guidelines for SB one spending.
So how much are we in deficit and need? Because I know it says here that we were awarded seven hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars for the roundabout. What is the estimated balance that we're needing to secure?
We need about a million.
And then, of course, we have, as the mayor touched on, we have the Central Avenue Bridge issue, which, I mean, I would say is pretty, like I've mentioned even during prior council meetings and during the course of the campaign, God forbid we have one good shake. I mean, because that thing's compromised.
Well, then it'd be an emergency situation.
Well, I understand that. I just hope we would never come to that. But, but nonetheless, all right, I just, please, staff, try to prioritize if you could, or try to get that roundabout fixed because I know there's residents that are still wanting to know what's going on. And the fact that they perceptions reality to them may not be justified. But if they don't see anything happen, they think the city's not doing anything. And I understand government moves at snail's pace as well. But anyhow, I just wanted to bring that up. Those were the issues I had with respect to this segment, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, on the roundabout, since we put the flashing signs and everything, and I'm not aware of accidents that have happened there, I mean, I'm not there all the time, but sometimes I wonder if we really need a roundabout there, but I'll let you guys make that recommendation.
Well, yeah, if we don't do the roundabout, there's, I guess, signalizing the intersection. But then I'm not sure what happens with our H sub grant.
Will we lose that funding at a certain period, the time?
Yeah, there's a timeline for that.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Ru.
Yes, and it's my final comment on this section. We were talking about house, excuse me, housing, and public-private partnerships and how we have to have market-rate housing because of that. No, we don't. There's nonprofit developers out there who would very, very much like to develop in this city, something like that. They would have rental for very low income, and the more moderate, they could do homeownership.
No, we agree, and those are the developers that we would be working with in relation to the affordable housing projects that we would be doing.
Not just the affordable housing. I'm talking about where we want to acquire this land from the state. I think what we need to do is, if it's acquired from the state, we should be working with a nonprofit developer to get affordable ownership and rental housing at that site, not this market rate. We're going to go with the developer and the public-private partnership, and we have to have this much market rate. We can turn around and make it affordable to families.
The issue is the parking, though. We have to maintain eleven-hundred to sixteen-hundred space parking structure, which, which Caltrans has not definitively decided yet. We are asking that it be reduced to eleven-hundred. The last communication from Caltrans between Caltrans and the Construction Authority is no. It needs to be sixteen-hundred. And building a sixteen-hundred space parking garage will actually probably be in the neighborhood of eighty million dollars because then it would then need to be an underground parking structure, two stories below ground and four to five stories above ground, and the cost will be eighty million to a hundred million dollars. How do you do that with a public-private partnership or even a low-housing developer building property there and also building that parking structure? Because we cannot build on the existing parking spaces until we have the parking structure. And the parking structure cost is the concern.
And parts of the income generated from those units could go to help pay for the parking structure. There's things such as land leases and things like that, so I won't go into all of it tonight.
But that counters your argument of parking being free. If we're now transferring the cost of parking to the residents directly, they're paying for parking.
It could be made free for those who are using the mass transit. Part of the parking garage could be paid for by the revenue generated from the units, even if they're doing it in other parts of the state. I can tell you right now in Claremont, there is a church that is doing SB four units, and they're going to generate revenue from those, and they're low-income.
Okay, well, that would be a decision of the city council if they want us to go that direction, so.
Well, I think it's important that we continue our mission, and part of that mission is market. I like to see more, you know, we've built a lot of market rent apartments in North Montclair. It would be nice if we can start seeing it again on our Occupy units. I know they're more difficult to build, or more difficult to do. I think there's a need for affordable housing. This city has done a lot of affordable housing. We'll talk about that when they're the Housing Authority. I think this city compared to a lot of our neighbors have done a lot of affordable housing. And I think there's still a need for us to, to build affordable housing in Montclair. But I think you also have to build lots of market housing. Because my experience, I've done this for twenty years, when you do, when you do affordable housing, it creates a great deal of subsidy to build our project. So, so, but, you know, over, at the end of the day, we have a plan. We stick with the plan. It's based on markets with also affordability developments being built into it. Not because we have to under the state of California under our housing element plan, but also it's just the right thing to do at the same time, so. All right, we'll go on to general fund, special purpose funds.
So now we'll review the general fund.
Actually, before we go there, does anybody want to take a five-minute break? Is there, is there a need? Let's take a five-minute break. Sorry about that. Then we'll go into special funds. All right, so Ben sitting down, we'll start the special purpose funds.
Okay, so now we'll review the general fund, special purpose funds. Special purpose funds established to address current and future liabilities, programs, projects, and goals requiring a commitment of funds not incorporated into the general fund operating budget. The CalPERS unanticipated normal cost retains three-point-five million dollars for CalPERS and post-employment liabilities. The technology enhancements account retains six-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand-five-hundred-nineteen dollars for technology acquisitions. Self-insurance fund retains one-point-six million dollars for city-related self-insurance retention liabilities. Building maintenance fund retains one-point-nine million for building maintenance. Unanticipated personal adjustment fund retains one million dollars for unanticipated personnel-related expenditures. Equipment replacement fund retains two-point-four million dollars for equipment acquisitions. This number reflects a reduction of two-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars towards fiscal year twenty-twenty-five-twenty-six capital outlay purchases. OPEB retiree medical liability retains two million dollars for other post-employment benefits. Long-term objective is eight-point-eight million dollars based on actuarial study. Contingency account retains two-hundred-thousand dollars for unanticipated expenditures after that hundred-and-twenty-thousand-dollar transfer. UALPOB amortization service fund retains four million dollars for unanticipated UAL charges. Parking facility development retains nine-point-eight million for parking facility development. The tariff recession inflation fiscal expenditure control fund retains a million dollars for unanticipated cost increases. Gold line betterment fund retains one-point-seven-five million for aesthetic improvements to infrastructure for the Gold Line Light Rail System at Mona Vista Avenue and the Montclair Trans Center. Street maintenance fund retains one-point-three-five million for street maintenance. The homelessness advocacy housing outreach assistance fund retains six-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-two-hundred-and-nine dollars for homelessness aid. The total estimated all special purpose funds is thirty-one-point-nine million.
Okay, I'm going to start off with this, and the CalPERS, I just, I'm trying, the CalPERS unanticipated normal cost of three-point-five, which is on page sixty-three, and then on page sixty-five, there's a UALPOB amortization service fund of four million dollars. First of all, let's go back to the UALPOB amortization fund sixty-five. We're about to talk about the pension obligation bond we issued. I believe there's about a million something every year will go into this fund. Am I correct?
You're correct. I think the amount goes, is much higher than that, but yes.
One million, whatever it is, goes in this fund every year. Grows. This one here grows. And the purpose of this fund is to offset future growth of the UAL, future obligations of UAL.
Yes, that's correct. Yes, that's correct. Yes.
Okay, then let's go to page sixty-three, the three-point-five of CalPERS unanticipated normal cost. What's the purpose of this? Does this cover also future increase of, uh, unfunded liabilities?
No, no, these are, these are normal cost range components. So we get normal cost rate increases. So there are two, two components to the CalPERS billing. There's the normal cost range component. Actually, there's three, because the employee has to pay their share.
Right.
Then the employer has to pay its share. That is represented here if the costs are above what we otherwise anticipate. So this is a reserve to cover above what we otherwise planned for. And the UAL is a totally separate third component. That one is based on the cost of what they ultimately have to pay that they're short on.
They're short on. That's the short money. Okay. So the three-point-five on page sixty-three, have we, have we used these funds yet? Or this is just in case there's an unexpected increase and these funds are set aside to cover those costs?
Well, whenever we use funds that are part of special purpose funds, we try to restore them with whatever surplus funds we have. I don't believe that we have brought this down in a year, couple of years at all. But the money is there in the event that the normal cost range all of a sudden skyrockets.
Basically surprises. This is a surprise under the normal one.
Right, and the normal cost range would skyrocket based on PERS's investments. And right now, they're not doing very good on their investments.
So that impacts normal one, then? The normal?
That would impact both the normal and the UAL.
Okay, so I'm going to go, my next question then is, so in the, in your message there, you talked about two-point-three million dollars, or two-point-five in the upcoming fiscal year, and you talked about three-point-something the following fiscal year of CalPERS costs. It's part of my email to you.
Yes.
So my question to you now is, I'm just trying to understand this. The two-point-five, as I say, for the next fiscal year, is that a new cost that we're incurring?
That is the new burden on the UAL. So, PERS, go ahead.
We're not paying any of that cost this year at two-point-five.
No, we paid money this year on the UAL. This year, it was what, nine-hundred million, nine-hundred thousand?
It was a little over one million.
One million, yeah. And, but all of a sudden, it skyrocketed for this next fiscal year.
One million to two-point-five?
Yep.
Okay, so we're paying an additional one-point-five next year compared to this year. In the following year, we're going to pay an additional one-point-three.
Yeah, well, that's our projection, and they will, of course, revise it.
Basically, in two years, we're going to pay about almost three million, three million dollars more in pension costs compared to this year.
In unfunded liability costs.
Liability more. Okay. All right, that answers my question finally. Okay, Councilmember Medes.
All right, real quick, just to tag on to that, so does that get added also to the, all the personnel cuts? Because I'm looking at the budget and, you know, it looks like there's at least twenty-eight million annually that is paid just to personnel only, and, which is obviously huge. And I was also looking at the OPEB retiree medical liability retains two million dollars. And that's for the people that have lifetime medical insurance?
That is for the retirees, yes.
And two million dollars a year? I mean, that's.
No, 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 no. So that is a fund that is created because, so the preferred GASB requirement, and it's not a requirement, but the GASB statements strongly recommend that you take the cost of your OPEB, your other post-employment benefits, and you fully fund it in a trust. The problem is that if you put the money in the trust, you lose total control of it. The money is there in the trust, and the money is paid out of the trust on an annual basis to cover your OPEB costs, and then you have to refund it each year to keep it up to that level. Now, that's a recommendation from GASB. We do not choose to follow that. We do not want to lose control of the money. So we've created this separate fund within the special reserves, which we are trying to fund up to our maximum, which is currently eight-point-eight million, which is actually down from thirteen million from four or five years ago. And the reason why it's down is because the city and city council have agreed that we will not enhance retiree-related costs. And so unlike, I would say, the vast majority of agencies in the city that continue to see their OPEBs climb geometrically on an annual basis, ours is actually declining, and that's a good thing. And our objective is to cover, as GASB recommends, ultimately the full cost of that eight-point-eight million dollars, and hopefully even to see that continuing to come down so that we can guarantee to credit agencies that we are fully funded in that capacity, because we get ranked on that and we get marked down on that if we don't have that OPEB secured. So our intent is to not put it in a trust, but to put it in a special reserve fund so that we can continue to maintain, maintain control of it. So if there's an emergency, we can tap that. But once it's in a trust, we lose total control of it. It's only there for that purpose.
So out of the total estimated of all special purpose funds of thirty-two million dollars approximately, how much of that do we actually spend on an average every year?
It fluctuates. It depends on what is not budgeted that year and what the departments might request out of one of those special purpose reserve funds. So IT randomly every year spends a. So IT randomly, every year, spends additional money out of the IT fund, and this year, obviously, as you know, I can't really talk about it, but there is a personnel liability fund that we will be spending a significant amount of money under, from that fund.
So, and then, as you mentioned...
And the equipment replacement fund, annually, the equipment replacement fund has a drawdown.
Yeah, but you don't ever spend the total amount, that's why I was asking, like, what's the average, you know, like, half of it? And then, we, whatever we spend, and you said that we put it back the next year.
If we have the surplus. If you notice, there is no increases this year because we have no surplus, and none of the funds are being increased or otherwise adjusted if there was a drawdown.
So last year, then it was the same amount, 32 million?
No, it's down from last year.
Oh, okay.
Last year it was, this year it was 34 million, and so it's down, it's down several million dollars.
A couple million, okay. And then, on the tariff recession...
And I might say, the unassigned reserve is down, is down a million and a half, you know, or it's actually down $2 million. We, we were projecting $8.6 million, and it's down at 6.5.
So the tariff recession inflation fund, you're, you're putting a million dollars away for unanticipated costs, and obviously, this is the first year, obviously, of this one?
Well, it's renamed, so last year, it was called the inflation, whatever the title was, and this year, I added the tariff component to try and come up with a cute little name. What did I come up with?
TRIFecta.
Tri, tripod or something like that.
TRIFecta.
Yeah, I tried to get to trifecta, but I couldn't get the T in there, so I just ended up with trifecta.
And I think that was it for me. That's it.
Okay, Councilmember Lopez.
To get to trifecta, you could have added the word Trump, and it would have been tariff recession...
I didn't want to make it too political.
Going back to the mayor's comments regarding the 2.5 million now being submitted to us from CalPERS, just the payment schedule, you mentioned that we already paid this year a million dollars, and that the next budget, or next year, we would be paying an additional 1.5 million. So technically, next year starts July 1. So come, that first week of July, are we making a wire transfer to then make up for that 1.5 million in addition to the million that we paid?
Well, we have to pay 2.5 million.
2.5 million.
I mean, we're gonna...
Fly, and so, yeah, we will make that payment in July, we do it as a lump sum, instead of in payments, because that saves us the interest.
No, and I appreciate staff doing that.
Yeah.
I really do, even before we floated the bonds, the fact that we were paying everything upfront, I appreciated that as well. That way, it just washes our hands of it, and they could leave us alone for a year.
Yeah, save what we can.
Okay, nope, that was my only question, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, going back to the 2.5, additional 1.5, so how come we're not, are we taking it out of the amortization service fund?
Yes, that's refunded every year, so it comes out of that UALPOBF, it's shown in the budget, and it's funded, and then next year, we'll refund it again, based on the formula that the council directed, as well as if it's beyond that, whatever available funds, we can put in it to cover that. Our objective is to stay on top of the UAL, so that we do not start accruing interest on it.
Okay.
So that'll draw it down to 1.5 million after that payment's made? Okay.
So because we did the, we're doing that, we'll talk about it in a second, we're putting money to the amortization service fund, that means there's less impact on the rest of the general fund because of the increase of the pension.
Well, I mean, it is an impact on the general fund, because we're diverting monies from other purposes to cover the UALPOBF.
Right, but because we're doing the pension obligation bond, you know, we're saving a million and a half, we're going in here, that offsets the increase, and it has a less impact on the rest of the general fund.
Yes, that is correct.
We weren't doing it that way, and then we just spent that money on something else, then we will have a greater, a greater impact on the general fund.
I would say that we would be about an $8 million payment on the UAL right now, if we were doing, if we did not do the bond.
Okay, let's go to, let's go to the next section.
Okay, so now we'll discuss...
And as far as the next, let's just go through all the bonds, and we'll stop after the third bond.
Okay, so we'll discuss our issue, bond issues that we have at the moment, the 2014 issue of lease revenue bonds, period fiscal year 2014 to 2045. So the issue amount for the 2014 lease revenue bonds was $45 million. The purpose was to defies the balance of the 2005 issue, which was issued for police facility and youth and senior center projects. It provided approximately $22 million for public works infrastructure projects. The 2014 issue of lease revenue bond funds have been exhausted. Annual debt services approximately 2.6 million through fiscal year 2044-45, and the funding source for the annual debt service is the, is general fund revenue, and this year's payment is just over 2.59 million. For the 2021 issue of lease revenue bonds, payment period is fiscal year 2022 to 2051. The issue amount for the 2021 lease revenue bonds was $45 million. The purpose was to complete infrastructure improvements projects throughout the city. Remaining balance is approximately $25 million. Annual debt service approximately $2.4 million through fiscal year 2050-51. The funding source for annual debt service is the general fund, and the payment for next fiscal year is approximately 2.39 million. The 2021 issue of pension obligation bonds, the payment period fiscal year 2021 to 2041. The issue amount for the pension obligation bond was $62,190,000. The purpose was to transfer debt from the city's California Public Employees Pension System unfunded accrued liability account to the pension obligation bond. The annual debt service is approximately 4.4 million through fiscal year 2040-41. The funding source for annual debt service is general fund, and the payment this year for next fiscal year, I'm sorry, is just over 4.4 million dollars.
Okay, any questions on the bonds? Go ahead, Xavier.
Yeah, just, on these, all the payments that we have to pay, on the first one, the 2014, which was originally the 2005 issued, what was the original end date on the 2005 one?
I don't remember off the top of my head.
Well, it would have been a 30-year bond, so the end date would have been 2035.
So we've added an additional 10 years, and, okay.
Yeah, we refinanced, we refinanced it, we got a lower rate, and we got more money so that we'd do projects.
Okay, so you got more money, so, it wasn't, okay, so if we're gonna, so it didn't start out at 45 million, then you're saying?
The 20, the 2014?
The 2005, yeah.
Yeah, no, that was a, I don't, I don't even recall what that bond amount was, but when we refinanced it in 2014, we refinanced it for about $42 million, but we owed 23, 23, 30, 40, we owed $19 million on the previous bond, so we only ended up with $23 million for capital projects.
Oh, okay. And that rate, I believe you mentioned that they're all fixed rates, these are all fixed now, because they won't, they won't increase or decrease?
Yeah, well, they're minor slight increases for certain variances, but generally, it's a very minimal adjustment.
Since rates are not going down, we probably won't refinance any of these, and we'll stick with these until they're done.
Would not be my recommendation.
Okay, all right, that was it.
Uh, Councilmember Lopez.
Yeah, quick question, the payment for the 2021 lease revenue bonds, the 2.3 million and change, I thought I read somewhere in your budget message, that particular allocation of money is coming through Measure L funds, correct?
So, yes.
Because they get put into the general fund?
In the sense, but Measure L monies, just like Measure RF monies, they all flow into the general fund, and they get co-mingled, so you can say that the city has committed that amount of Measure L-generated revenue, but technically, it all is general fund dollars.
And the, I guess that earmark, the unwritten earmark, will continue so long as, so long as the life of the bond is...
Absolutely. It's a, sort of a first priority of the city council, so the city council wants to make certain that its bonds are paid, so that there isn't a recall of the bonds, and then whatever's left over after that is for general government operations. And it demonstrates to credit companies that we have made that commitment, that our finances are secure, and we are not a risk.
In the event that Measure L funds take a major dip, drawing off of that line of funds for that payment, what would offset the, what would offset the deficit in payment funds?
I think it would have to be a real collapse of the economy for that to occur, and I think we're seeing, obviously, a dip right now, but it's a manageable dip. I mean, it still is generating 10.7 million projection, and that's significantly more than the 2.4 million dollar payment, so I think we're okay. I think we have a long way to go, so I wouldn't be concerned about that, but if it ended up to, at that, then you have the special purpose reserve funds that you draw on.
Okay, thank you for your explanation.
I just want to clarify, Measure L, the increase in Measure L, $11 million extra brought in, that went to the general fund.
Right.
So, if we wanted to do capital projects then, because we have all this addition, new additional money coming in, there's two ways to go about it. One way is you do the bond, like, you want to build a house, you go and get a loan, you build a house now, and then pay it off over whatever number of years. Or the other way you do is you set the side of money, the money aside, and then build a capital project when you have the money sitting in a savings account, which is a much longer process to get to. But it is, it's all general fund money, including the pension obligation bond, I know that's something Councilmember Mendez has kept asking me, it's all general fund money, and the general fund's responsible to pay off these obligation, but it doesn't matter what the, what the measures are. Thanks. Okay.
Ready for my conclusion?
Go ahead, let's do the conclusion.
We'll now talk about the proposed budget conclusion. Fiscal year 2025-26 general fund operating budget, successful and balanced budget, utilizes a number of funds and strategies to achieve balance and respond to a number of community and organizational needs. The passage of Measure L in 2020 greatly improved the city's revenue profile, generating an estimated $10.76 million in transactions and use tax revenues for fiscal year 2025-26. However, sales and transaction and use tax receipts are presently underperforming. Both real-world data and estimates provided by the city's tax consultant suggest the city should expect a sustained decline of approximately 3% at least until mid-2026, when tax receipt recovery may achieve a minor gain. However, any real improvement will be based on the direction and tenor of federal economic and fiscal policies over the next several months. Fiscal year 2025-26 proposed budget incorporates the following debt service funds: the 2014 issue of lease revenue bond, revenue bonds debt service fund, the 2021 issue of lease revenue bonds debt service fund, and the 2021 issue of pension obligation bonds debt service fund. The fiscal year 2025 budget, as proposed, also incorporates the allocation of funds for the following special reserve funds: a transfer of $120,179 to the contingency reserve fund. For fiscal year 2025-26, each city department was provided flexibility in the preparation of their respective budget programs. However, after budgets were submitted, it was necessary for the city manager to reduce department budget requests. Reductions were made using historical data, expenditure details, actual and projected needs, and available funding. Going forward, city staff will routinely look at fresh approaches for service delivery, continue to evaluate grants and outside funding opportunities, seek to develop strategies to improve both the appearance and infrastructure of the community, promote new revenue concepts, pursue development of the city's commercial and residential base, promote economic development opportunities by drawing on the city's past and effective promotion of redevelopment, continue to develop the partnerships for investments not only in North Montclair, but throughout the city, and work with regional, state, and federal representatives to promote efforts designed to move Montclair forward. And that's the end of my presentation for the city's budget. If there's any other questions?
Let's, let's go into the Housing Corporation's budget.
Montclair Housing Corporation proposed budget for fiscal year 2025-26. So the Montclair Housing Corporation, list of Montclair Housing Corporation properties are contained in the Montclair Housing Corporation budget. The estimated fund, fund balance at July 1, 2025 is just over 1 million. Estimated revenue, rental income, $1.2 million, and interest income, $18,000, for a total of $2,242,000. Positions previously funded by the Housing Corporation are now fully funded by the general fund, an action that reserves Housing Corporation funding for maintenance and expansion of the city's affordable housing program. So here's a chart, it shows all the administrative costs for the different categories, for a total of $1,078,400. The assigned fund balance long-term maintenance and repair, $953,181. The estimated fund balance at the end of this current fiscal year is $1,024,581, and the estimated fund balance at next fiscal year is $953,181. And that is the end of the fiscal year 2025-26 Montclair Housing Corporation budget review presentation.
Okay, any questions on the Housing Corporation? I don't see any. If we go to the entire budget, I don't see any questions, comments for councilmembers lit up. I just want to say, first of all, that, obviously, last year's, last, the budget for the last two years is much easier compared to this budget here. I think staff's done a really good job trying to prepare this budget based on circumstances that we're dealing with, obviously, staff talked about it, and I think, right now, uncertain future, not just tariffs, but economy that can be taking place, and we're trying to be, I see, as being more conservative now, tighten our belts, to making sure that, that we're able to, to fulfill this, this budget if it's approved, and then hopefully, next year, if it continues to be, you know, the same as next year in terms of how, where the economy could be, or could be worse, that perhaps we're still solid in terms of moving forward, even though we still have to be conservative on our budget. So, again, I appreciate staff doing this, and I don't see any councilmembers, nobody else wants to speak, no comments, no nothing else?
I'll say something.
Go ahead.
I don't need to remind people, but this is my first year on the city council, and I know, I worked for the city for a long time, and I thought I knew a lot about budgets and just the city itself, but once you start to dive and go down that rabbit hole of finance, it's definitely a different animal, and I'm learning a lot, and I appreciate, you know, the people that I have spoken to that have helped me to understand certain, you know, funds, and, you know, bonds, and revenues, and taxes, because I didn't really deal with those types of funds, so I'm learning a lot. There are things that I would like to see change, you know, but I'm not going to go over those now, but I, I know the work that goes into this, and I appreciate, you know, all the staff, I know all the managers and directors have to, you know, do that dirty deed of talking to their employees and letting them know, you know, things might get tough, so let's do a scenario where we have to, you know, maybe make cuts, where would we cut, you know? So I appreciate all the employees doing what they can, and, and, but again, you know, it's just one of those things, we'll see where we are, and hopefully, things don't end up as bad as where we think they might, and maybe all these, you know, consultants that we use and HDL, maybe they're completely wrong, and that's all I can hope for, and, but again, you know, just know that, you know, I know the council, and I'm sure I'm speaking for all of us, we care a lot about the city staff, everybody, not just certain people, and we want to make sure that we do what's best for the city staff in every way possible, so just, just know that. And other than that, again, thank you, Janet, for all your work, and thank you. thank you, Ed, and every, all the other staff, too. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Roux.
Yes. First, thank you for putting up with me tonight and, um, being a bit under the weather. Uh, I want to thank the staff for what they've done. It's very detailed. It takes a lot of time, and we appreciate it. Uh, I appreciate what you said, Councilman Mendez, about the employees, and we care about all of them. I tend to look at our organization not as a pyramid, but I look at it as a circle. So, we're all connected in that circle. No one is above another, and I, I think that's a good way to look at things. And as we move forward, we can always hope for the best, but I think we're also in the back of our minds saying, if we need to (sigh) do, make very difficult decisions, we'll do it. Um, some of you were not up here. I think, Mayor, you and I were the on, are the only ones here who years ago had to make those tough decisions, and we did it. We came through very well, and if we have to make it again, I know this council will be able to do that. Thank you.
Well, thank you. So, with that, uh, we'll move on from the presentation, go to the consent calendar. Can I have a, uh, obviously, the consent calendar does include adoption of the budget and the Housing Authority's budget. Can I get a motion for the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion for that.
Yep.
By Councilmember Roux, seconded by Mayor Proten Martinez. We'll do electronic vote. There we are. And that is adopted by five-zero. Okay, so the next item now is planning commission appointments. Um, we, uh, Councilmember, Mendez and myself, along with Planning Commission Vice Chair Jace Los Sanchez, conducted interviews on Thursday, June twelfth. Um, we had, uh, thirteen applicants who applied. I was a little shocked when I got that number. I thought I was, uh, was, uh, I misheard it, but it was thirteen. So, we decided to spread this out over two days, uh, to go through all thirteen. One was, one was a no-show. As he, um, we gave each applicant about fifteen minutes. We gave them five questions. We felt, uh, because so many applicants, we wanted to just give them five. Uh, I consider to be, I think one question is, first question was, tell us something about yourself. Why did you apply? I think the next question is, um, I can't remember the question is now, what the question was. Uh, uh, one, uh, what's the difference between a planning commission and city council? Uh, I think the second question was to, uh, do you remember, Mike?
I think they're supposed to talk about other qualifications.
Yeah, one of the questions, your qualifications. How does your, uh, your qualifications meet the, uh, the role of a planning commissioner is one of, one of the other questions, and I can't...
Why you wanted to be a planning commissioner?
And why do you want to be a planning commissioner, and then, of course, you have anything else to offer us. So, so we went through all this. We scored on, you see the scores on the sheet here. Um, I'll let Councilman Mendez speak in a second, uh, but, um, uh, we had a lot of people, why they applied, because they are interested in Montclair, they're interested in getting more involved in the city of Montclair. Um, unfortunately for me, um, just about all of them, maybe except, I thought one candidate, but just all of them, with exception of Patel and Martinez, the other, uh, at least ten, I felt, uh, really had no understanding of what a planning commission does. They really never attended a meeting here. They really didn't really do their homework. Um, so they were very, um, uh, what's, they were very, uh, inexperienced of a, to be a planning commissioner. Uh, I felt there were, a lot of them were actually good candidates to be on our community activities commission because of their, uh, their excitement for the city of Montclair. I did feel maybe one of them, perhaps, did have, one candidate did have some understanding of some of the developments that are happening in the city of Montclair, or what type of developments you would like to see in the city of Montclair. Uh, but that was, uh, that was one of them. But, uh, at the end, uh, both Patel and Martinez, uh, scored well. Uh, they came in, they talked about, um, you know, not just what the planning commission has done, uh, on their role, but their understanding of the developments in the city of Montclair. And, uh, so, uh, I, uh, these are the scores, and, uh, obviously, both Patel and Martinez were, were my top, top two. Councilmember Mendez?
Well, can I borrow that letter that you have? I don't have it.
Oh, you don't have it?
No. I just have the applications. Um, yeah, again, it, it was an honor to be able to, um, sit on the panel and, um, listen to everybody, and, uh, was very excited. A lot of people were excited. We got to talk to everybody that, you know, applied, and, um, we were able to give them ideas of what to do, you know, to better themselves, you know, if they really want to pursue this. A lot of people were first timers, and, um, there were a few that had done it a couple times. So, um, but other than that, it, it was nice to be able to, um, meet all these people and see who wants to be involved in the city, and I think it's a great thing. But, you know, as John mentioned, um, we, uh, after interviewing everybody, two people stood out the most, and, um, I'll let you finish with that.
Okay. So, with that, uh, I'm going to, uh, move to nominate, uh, Christian Patel and Manny Martinez to the planning commission. Can I get a second?
Miss, I will, I agree with that motion, or I'll second it.
So, there's a second to the motion. Uh, Councilmember Roux, did you have a comment? Did you have a comment, Bill? You're, you're lit up here.
Oh, no.
Okay. Oh, all right. Okay, any further comments this time? If not, we'll take a, we'll do an electronic vote. And it's adopted five-zero. Okay, uh, now, we're getting to, to the adjournment. I, I just want to reckon, I know I'm, I am, I'm going to say something. Fire chief, could you keep, could you please come up and, uh, address the council, the letter you got today from the insurance industry? I think the council will be very excited to hear this letter. I, it's a way into the next council meeting, but that's about three weeks out. Go ahead, chief.
Sure. So, today, we received notice. We had been in the last couple months being surveyed by the Insurance Services Office. Um, this is our particular process that is involved to determine insurance rates for city residents, as well as commercial properties. Um, and after, I'm pleased to announce, after the, um, letter we received today, we moved from an ISO three, which was last surveyed in 2013, to an ISO two. So, that's great news for the city and the constituents of the city, as well as the businesses, that hopefully, they will see in reduction in their insurance premiums going forward. Um, that is contingent. We recently had some fires, of course, and the insurance industry is going through some changes. So, we may see some raises due to those causes as well. However, hopefully, this ISO rating will help, uh, keep those from reducing.
And that's, uh, I believe, uh, you're...
Sorry?
Yeah, five percent, I was about to say.
Oh, I wanted to also mention that, yeah. So, the, uh, ISO two rating is, uh, a good achievement. It actually, um, approximately only five percent of fire departments in, nationally, uh, reach a two, reach the ISO two classification. So, pleased to announce...
We're in the five percent, guys. So, I want to compliment you. I know you just became chief now, uh, the whole department. Um, obviously, Dave, uh, previous Chief Dave Poole, but congratulations, and, uh, good achievement, and I think that's something that's worthwhile to put out to the community on our social media, uh, when we get to it.
What does ISO stand for? I didn't hear it.
Yeah, it's the, uh, Insurance Services Offices, Office, excuse me.
So, I can call my insurance company and tell them I'm an ISO two area and maybe get a discount?
Yeah, and that is effective on October. So, they, they sent the letter, but is effective October of 2025.
Right. I appreciate that, and, uh, thank you.
Yep.
And then, uh, Captain, uh, Venter, I also appreciate the fact that you spoke to the resident today, and came up to the podium. Uh, there's a lot of people in the city and surrounding cities live in fear. They should not be living in fear, but that's unfortunate the policy that's, that's happening now. But I appreciate the police department, and I think there's, one thing you said today is, if people were, who are wearing masks and look like they're in a police uniform, and you have no idea who they are, call 911. In addition to that, get your video cameras out there. I realize I'm teaching the, uh, speaking to the choir out here right now, but call 911, uh, because I'm afraid you're going to start seeing groups, gangs, doing the same thing, impersonating as though they're a federal official, and kidnapping people off the streets, and that's obviously something that we don't want to see. Okay, with that, we're adjourned.